... to make to town meeting members, I'd ask that you come in and take your seats. For those of you who are watching, this is Plymouth's Fall Annual Town Meeting, and it is coming to you live from Plymouth North High School on Saturday, October 21st. We are located on Aubrey Street. We are resuming the afternoon session. If there are some people arriving late, if you can share with them this announcement, which is important, and if you can take your seats. So during the break, as moderator, I became aware that a town meeting member was present throughout the morning session, sitting in the rear of the Center for Performing Arts, and the town meeting member has COVID. And due to, after consulting, and the town meeting member has had COVID prior to arriving, the town meeting member knew he had COVID, but came to town meeting. I consulted with the Director of Public Health, Karen Keen, town meeting member also, who is here and is going to address town meeting, but based on her recommendation regarding the guidelines, I then asked the police officer on duty through the chief to remove this town meeting member from town meeting due to the fact that people with COVID are supposed to isolate. And now I'm going to call on Karen Keen, Director of Public Health. She will further explain the current rules and guidelines, and we will also entertain any questions that anyone here might have with respect to this COVID exposure to our Plymouth Fall Town Meeting. Karen Keen, welcome. Let's turn on the mic for Karen Keen.
Hello, perfect. Karen Keen, Director of Public Health, also town meeting member for Precinct 14. Wanted to let the body know that the current protocol for COVID-19 is this: When someone tests positive for COVID-19, they must isolate for five days. That means they separate themselves from all other people. On the sixth day, as long as they are not symptomatic, they are allowed to continue with their normal business as long as they are masked from days six through days 10. There is no current protocol for what we used to call quarantining, because there is no such thing currently as a close contact. So the person who has tested positive for COVID has been removed from town meeting, as they should, because they're in their isolation status. But there is no such thing as a close contact, so everyone else who's here can continue business as usual, unless, of course, by their choice, they choose to leave. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Does anyone here in the room have any questions about the COVID exposure? David Golden. If we can bring a mic to Mr. Golden. Sound.
Hi, David Golden, Precinct 7. For folks who choose to leave at this point, will they be able to participate remotely?
No, that's a good question, and Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi is prepared to respond. Nicole Manfredi.
So it's actually a great question, and the answer is a disappointment for some. We can't, once we're committed to a process, whether you choose in-person or remote, you need to be committed to that. It takes about 10 to 12 minutes for us to reprogram, and there's a technical process that they explained to me this morning, but it takes about 10 to 12 minutes to reprogram the pathway to the base, which is all I understand, to shift somebody from remote to in-person and vice versa. So if we did that for one person, not a big deal. Four people, 10 people, we're now delaying the start of time meeting by two hours. So while hybrid is a great option, and it does provide for people to let us know ahead of time participation is necessary remotely, we can't do it on the fly. And that was why we requested that you let us know a week in advance. So I do feel like having the option for hybrid does eliminate barriers and lets some people who are traveling or, you know, in lots of different circumstances, they can still participate. But when it comes to, you come down with an illness, we can't shift 163 people, like it just wouldn't, we couldn't do it. And maybe one day we'll have the technology to do that, but at this point where it stands, we're kind of killing ourselves trying to juggle a remote and in-person, I'm not going to lie. So we're doing the very best we can, but it is not going to be an option for people to participate both remotely and in-person. Now, I know a member has said that they were just going to ask for remote credentials for every meeting, and my response was, if 163 people did that and then 163 people showed up for town meeting, we would not have town meeting, because it would take 10 minutes to reprogram each one of those pathways. So I know it's a little bit of a disappointment, but I hope that the benefits of having hybrid outweigh that inconvenience. And I've had, I've been kind of dealing in the back here with some other folks who are, I'm trying to kind of make it all work, but at this point, either you're remote or you're in-person, and we need to stick with that. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Nicole Manfredi, Assistant Town Moderator. Carl Mason.
Yeah, just a quick question. Sorry, I was out of the room. How did we find out about this?
So again, during the lunch recess, I was notified as moderator, and I, as the presiding officer, have responsibility for the room, actually for the building, even though it's a school building. And I determined as soon as I was notified to consult with the Director of Public Health, who advised me this person needed to be isolated, at which time I spoke to the Chief of Police, who spoke to the duty officer, and the person was removed from town meeting, and now we have this Q and A for anybody that has questions as to the COVID exposure. Betsy Hall.
Thank you so much. I was a little concerned about coming this morning, because my husband is having surgery on Tuesday. So just for reassuring us, not close contact, are you saying that someone like myself was not exposed to COVID?
The protocol right now by this Department of Public Health for the state of Massachusetts, there's no such thing as a close contact any longer. So where in the past, if you were exposed to COVID, you had to quarantine for a certain number of days, that no longer exists. The only person who has to take action is the person who actually has been tested positive for COVID. They must isolate for five days, and then the sixth to 10th day, wear a mask if they are asymptomatic.
So how can I find out if I was exposed to COVID today?
You would have to take a COVID test.
But I mean, was I sitting near a person who had COVID, or was I standing next to a person who had COVID? Do you know?
I don't know.
All I can answer is that although the person was sitting in the back of the room, the person entered the building, the person checked in with the town clerk, the person got a handset, so there was definitely exposure to anyone that came in contact with that person.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Mason, do you have another question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could clarify, as moderator, you have the authority to eject town meeting members?
Of course, yes, I do.
Thank you.
And I did. Next, Michael Hanlon.
I had a question about Article 8.
We'll come back to that. Any further questions or comments to Karen Keen, Director of Public Health? Virginia Davis, nurse, town meeting member.
Thank you. I don't have to really introduce myself. Just to reassure people, I've had COVID twice. I don't even know how I got it the second time, but we go grocery shopping, we go out to eat. One of us sitting here may be asymptomatic, and tomorrow we have COVID. The best thing is to, you know, take care of yourself. When you're tired and when you're sick, stay home. It's just common sense. COVID's like a lot of other diseases, only we do have to, when we know we have it, we have to protect other people. So I would just relax. Maybe I was talking to this person that's close, I don't know, but let's hope that everybody will stay healthy. Thank you.
Nathan Siegel.
Thank you. Just thinking ahead quickly to next town meeting, you mentioned the one-week notice to be included in the remote. We might want to carve out an exception within that one week if someone tests positive. They could be given remote credentials. Nicole is shaking your head no. I mean, that's just going to encourage people to come if they're testing positive.
We wanted to do that, but in consultation with all of the many people who support us, PAC TV, OTI Technologies, the town clerk, all of the different groups that are affected. And Nicole Manfredi will further respond.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be short. I'm trying to, I'm not a tech person, so if one person needed to shift in the morning, it would take 10 minutes to accommodate that one person. If three people did, it would take 30 minutes. So we're looking at, could we do it for a few? I mean, we could if that's something we want to talk about, but I can't say yes to one and not to 163 people.
Yeah, I mean, we can continue this certainly in the run-up to spring town meeting, but I think that for a positive COVID test, my opinion is that there should be an exception if it happens within that one week period, but we can continue. We don't have to take up time with this.
Right, that's okay.
We'll take further feedback at another time as to future protocol, but does anybody else have comments or questions regarding today's exposure? Brigida Keen.
Yes, I wanted to know if anybody here in possibly a DPW knows how the air handlers work in this room and how many air exchangers we have, because that makes a huge impact on exposure. Does anybody have that information of how this building is handled from an HVAC perspective? No? Okay, I just wanted to raise a question. If it has normal HVAC, the turnovers of the air within this room should be adequate to quell some fears. Thank you.
Dale Weber.
Dale Weber, Precinct 3. I just wanted to make a comment that you've already established a precedent by allowing somebody that was here in the morning to get on electronically and virtually, so please don't discriminate and offer what you did to one person to all. Thank you.
Let me clarify that, because that's a very good point. That person contacted the town clerk last week, that person requested to be remote, and then that person showed up in person, and that person voted using the remote credentials and not the handset. So I was not aware of that when that first happened. That will not happen again. You're all on notice, you know, this is not a game, you're not going to be requesting credentials and then coming. I mean, you're going to, we're going to have to make decisions, because people have to be safe from a health point of view, and we also have to be understanding of the support that we're getting from the many groups that support the technology. Nicole is mentioning, if you start thinking about it, if you have one, two, or three, now you interrupt the technology for 30 minutes. This morning, if we were interrupted for 30 minutes, that would have put us quite a bit behind. Patricia Edelman.
I just wanted to ask if we know if this person had a mask on.
The person did have a mask.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, but I was told for the majority of the time. Any further discussion on the COVID exposure before we go back to Article 8? Yes.
Alan Costello, Precinct 10. I just want to hopefully dispel anyone's, or at least alleviate some of their fears. The person had COVID earlier in the week, and based on Ms. Keen's timeline, they were in the six, seven-day period with the mask on the majority of the time. So granted, I'm not defending the person, all I'm saying is that anyone with some real concerns, it wasn't at the beginning of the COVID break.
I appreciate that, Ms. Costello, however, that's not our understanding of the facts. Our understanding is that the person who has COVID is still in the period of time when the person should isolate, according to the Director of Public Health.
Well, I don't want to dispute that. I'm just going by an earlier Texas week where they were not able to make the caucus, and the time adds up, that's all.
That was on the 18th, which would still be within the period.
Mine is different, but okay, thank you. I don't want to get in the middle of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Again, thank you to Karen Keen, Director of Public Health, for your assistance on this issue. And now we're going to return back to Article 8, Master Plan Funding. We had the presentation. I'm going to now move to my speakers list. We're going to begin with Patricia Edelman, and she is Precinct 12, and she is followed by Virginia Davis, Precinct 4, and we are debating the motion under Article 8. And welcome, Patricia Edelman from Precinct 12. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for being here. I know how much preparation you have taken, and it's wonderful to see democracy in action. I'm here to talk about Article 8, about the master plan, which we desperately need. We also desperately need a planning department that can accommodate the master plan. We have not just a planning department, but a planning and development department. The planning director wears two hats. He has to accommodate planning, and he has to accommodate development. I would like to see the town establish a planner dedicated to planning. I know it has been said that the last time we revisited the master plan, a planner was hired and it didn't work out. Well, I've spoken to some of the people who were around during that master planning, and you get different stories. Some people say it didn't work out because the master planner was not given ample time, and he rode in, ran into roadblocks. But that's, he said, she said. So my request is that we postpone this vote on the master plan and wait until the town has established a planner who can spend time with the consultant from the very beginning, so he can take ownership of this master plan, so that the implementation can be directed and not by the past, where we didn't have the staff for implementation. Please vote no on the master plan proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Virginia Davis, Precinct 4, followed by Michael Hanlon. We're debating Article 8 of the Fall Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Welcome, Virginia Davis.
Good afternoon. I want to begin by thanking people, all of you here, allowing me the time to speak. Let me begin by saying that I am in favor of the master plan. I'm not disputing the amount of money that will be required, and I have only praise for the committee that diligently spent more than a year to create Charting Our Future Together. Some of you, though, may not be aware of the fact that the town of Plymouth has spent $2,533,627 in the last five years on consultants, and this is from the procurement department. So just keep that figure in mind, and again, I am not disputing the amount it will take for a master plan. In 2006, a group of dedicated individuals did create Growing Smarter in Plymouth in the 5th century, a strategic action plan for the town of Plymouth. I've spoken at length to some of the very key individuals, and one of the goals of this plan was implementation, but due to lack of infrastructure, implementation never occurred. And there were other factors, but again, as Pat has said, it's he said, she said, and really that does none of us any good. But unfortunately, the master plan gathered dust, and I know Lee at times took it out, but you know, he has a huge job, and there's only so much he could do. So we're about to repeat history, creating a master plan without infrastructure in place, or a plan to revise our zoning bylaws. And what do I mean by infrastructure? A budget that supports the necessary staff for the planning department to work with the master plan consultants and help create an implementation plan. I've been assured that this will happen, but I'd like to see it in an article in the spring of 2024, including this kind of language. Without a review of our zoning bylaws, the master plan cannot be enforced. It has no teeth, it has no power. The zoning bylaws are the backbone of development. Think of the town in terms of the human body. What does the human body look like without its skeleton? Look around the town of Plymouth. Are you happy with what you see? Well, this is what has developed in the last 20 years without being able to use. Could I have another? I have a paragraph to read, but I won't read it if people don't want me to.
One minute, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a pause until spring, but these are, these words that I'm going to read are in your handbook. Okay. Due to the staffing constraints, municipal staff will not be able to devote significant time to supporting, for example, public participation beyond scheduling support. The consultant should plan accordingly to ensure sufficient capacity to undertake all aspects of this extensive project. Consultants should consider in their proposals how best to incentivize and use volunteers from the community to support outreach efforts. In closing, I would urge you to vote no today and put it forward in the spring, when we have a chance to look at our zoning bylaws and place in our budget what a planning department will need, because a town cannot just be built on sifting sand. Thank you.
Virginia Davis, thank you. Michael Hanlon, Precinct 15, followed by Betty Cavaco, Precinct 6. Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you. Michael Hanlon, Precinct 15. I'm supportive of Article 8. I think it's long overdue, and it's something that we need. I have a question, and I'm not sure whether the town manager, or Mr. Bulleton, or Mr. Hartman wants to answer it, but I was reading Article 17 about the Holtech pilot agreement, and one of the bullet points in that document says, "Holtech has agreed to participate in a master planning process with the town concerning future uses of the land," meaning the 1,500-acre, I'm not sure whether it's, we call it, still called the Entergy property or the Holtech property, but it's 1,500 acres. So my question is simply, will there be one planning process that includes the Holtech/Entergy property, you know, going along with this clause in the pilot agreement, or will it be two separate processes, one for the town-wide master plan and one for the Holtech property? Is it one process or is it two?
Lee Hartman is Director of Planning Development, responding to a question from town meeting member Michael Hanlon. Mr. Hartman.
Thank you. So I would envision that the Holtech property, and again, this is your master plan, not mine, but I would envision that the Holtech property is going to be one of the main focuses of this update. And as we talk to the community about what's most important, looking at that property is going to be one of the main focuses of this master plan. And just to the previous speaker too, again, we have the staffing. The quotes that they made were the reasons why we want to hire a consultant, to help us help the community do the master plan. And it's not just me. We have two planners, we have a conservation planner and myself, so it's not like we just have myself doing planning, we have a staff of planners, and again, we're able and willing to help the community in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Cavaco, Precinct 6.
Actually, Mr. Hartman, if you could just stay there, because I'm not, I really don't wrap my head around hearsay, but I guess my honest question to you is, can the planning department handle the master plan that is put forward?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
David Golden, Precinct 7.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, folks. Dave Golden, Chair, Precinct 7. I think that this might be the most important article that's before us today. The town is in need of a compass, a roadmap, something that we all agree together as neighbors as to how we want to see Plymouth change and grow in the next five, 10, 20 years. You know, we've all heard today and in our caucuses and in any meeting where this planning process has been discussed over the last several months, the following. We have the knowledge. The town currently is in possession of a number of pertinent and up-to-date studies relating to traffic, staffing, fire preparedness, and a variety of other topics. A delay in the development of a master plan will preclude these items from being taken into consideration as they age and become less relevant over time. We have the funding. Utilizing free cash in combination with the earmarks from the Commonwealth, it will minimize the impact to the residential taxpayers. And we have the political will. The Master Plan Task Force unanimously supports this article, so too do the Select Board and the Advisory and Finance Committee. Four of the five planning board members have endorsed the plan. Colleagues, the planning board and the Master Plan Task Force have done their job. Let's do ours today. Vote yes on Article 8, and let's get planning together.
Betsy Hall, Precinct 16.
Yes, I want to clarify Ms. Cavaco's question. It was said, is the planning department able to handle the master plan as it goes forward? I'm not sure what that means. Could you elaborate on what that means, please?
Lee Hartman is Director of Planning.
And also, would you elaborate on the fact that the 1,500-acre Holtech property is the main focus of this master plan?
A main focus, not the main. A main, because it's the largest undeveloped piece of property. And again, this is not, I'm guessing, because it's what the community says they want to focus on. So what will happen is we hire a consultant, and we do this in many cases, that consultant's responsibility will be to have the public outreach, design the public forums, draft the actual document, all the technical work involved with that. On a staff level, we are going to coordinate those meetings, we're going to participate in those meetings, there'll be, will be some form of master plan committee of citizens, and again, this is up to the planning board to create, but there'll be some committee that will be citizens as well as elected or appointed officials that will be working with my department as well as the consultant, working through with the community, try to get the first, the vision of the community, and then the actual master plan as well as its implementation. So again, ours would be more of a coordination role, certainly participation too, but coordination. And again, we're able to do that. It's a goal of the town manager and the select board too, so it's not just my department. We have all town employees on the town side who will be ready to assist in the process.
Thank you, and I'd like to have, ask Mr. Bulleton to speak to the implementation situation, because as someone referred to, master plans, not just in our committee, I mean, our town, but in many towns, sit on shelves and collect dust.
Steve Bulleton is the Chair of the Master Plan Task Group and Vice Chair of the Planning Board. Mr. Bulleton.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, for the question, because it is important. Yeah, this is our, this is our current master plan. It doesn't have an implementation section. An implementation section is a concrete, it's a guideline, it's a roadmap, but it's more than that. It creates action items, things that the town needs to do in order to achieve what the residents say are their goals. And Mr. Hartman made an important point, and it's a point I try to make whenever I appear. The master plan is the goals of the residents. It's the one time the residents truly get out to speak and to tell the town what they want. In order to implement that, we need to have those action items. We do need to take action to enforce those action items. We need to hold all of us collectively, our feet to the fire, as representatives of the public, whether that becomes a line item in the charter, or whether that's a town bylaw, which I believe Ms. Hall favors, and is an idea that I believe the planning board will certainly look at as a proposal. There's no question that what should be contained is a master plan with proposed implementation and requirements that all of our town boards and committees, anyone making a binding decision, town meeting included, be provided with a statement before they consider an article or an idea that this is how it comports with our master plan, because we shouldn't be making decisions that go contrary to our master plan. But until we have a master plan, until we have those action items, there is no way for us to enforce this. When I look at our current master plan, it says things like transportation, we should have better transportation. That's not an action item. We all agree to that, but that's the level we got. Now, I am not in any way critical of the master plan committee that worked 20 years ago to try and get this done. They did yeoman's work. They put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. Where we Where we fell down was in not hiring the right group of people to put the document together as it should have been put together. It's true. We can get all the public input we want, but if the data isn't correlated and the action items aren't completed, then the document is worthless. That's what happened to us. Why? Because we ran out of money. We put $250,000 on the table and we paid somebody $250,000 to do it. And we hired them as a consultant without a contract, without a scope of work, and they didn't finish the job. We're not going to let that happen again. That's why we're here. That's why we're here in front of town meeting, to get the right amount of money, to make sure we follow this process and that we hire capable, substantial, supported consultants who will be contractually bound to give us the right document before they get their money. That's the priority. Protect the town's, the residents' funds and get them the document that we need and they deserve.
Thank you, Mr. Bulleton. Stephen Lyden, Precinct 17, followed by George Brown, Precinct 7. Mr. Lyden.
This town's 103 square miles. There is no way the Planning Board could be able to take this task on as a master plan. And it's not just the Planning Board. It's going to be the Planning Board, the Selectmen, every other board in this town is going to be involved. So it's not just Lee Hartman and his, you know, two or three planners. This is going to be a joint effort. Right now, we have a, we have a plan, master plan that we can't use. It's not, it's existing, but it's worthless. We need the consultants who know what they're doing. You know, you get what you pay for. You see what you get paid for in the last one. Do you want to see that happen again? Hiring one person to oversee is not going to help. You need a, you need a committee and you have that already in place. So hiring one person and delaying this is just going to cause the price to go up. And if you don't want your taxes to go up, then, you know, it will if you don't approve this today. Thank you.
George Brown, followed by Joseph Hutchinson, Precinct 17. Mr. Brown.
George Brown, Precinct 7. First of all, we do need this master plan because I'm going to tell you something right now. The COPC has formed what is known as a Legislative Oversight Committee. And I'm going to tell you, I'm the Vice Chair, there's two people in planning that I might just have to bring my oxya setland torch to their backsides if it doesn't get implemented.
Joseph Hutchinson, Precinct 17. He is participating remotely. We're going to bring in Mr. Hutchinson with remote participation. He's using the V voter in the Zoom conferencing platform. When he's ready, Mr. Hutchinson, go ahead, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to speak in favor of this, this motion because the, well, I would, I guess I would ask the town meeting today to consider the challenges that Plymouth is going to face over the next 10 to 20 years and think of the context that the master plan will provide for all of us. They will, the topics that get dealt with are, first of all, the goals and policies that Mr. Bulleton and Mr. Hartman talked about. But, but what they deal with is land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources. I mean, we spent a half hour today talking about the extension to the town wharf. And there are lots of us who don't know that, the context, who don't have a model that we can actually reference. And, and a master plan can provide that kind of an, that kind of information. Some of the important challenges that face us coming up are, for example, the housing and MBTA challenges that we have and that we've only just begun to deal with. Land use, the town has grown and we are developing housing at an extraordinary rate. Open space and recreation, and not the least of which we have to work with is circulation and transportation. You know, our streets, our parking, our bicycle, our pedestrian mobility, public transportation. All of those sorts of topics are top of mind when you start thinking about how the town is going to have to progress. Just think about the Sagamore Bridge and Route 3 over the next 10 years. What are we going to do to adapt to that, to that project? So, you know, the challenges that we have to deal with and just in terms of the context the town meeting has to use, you should think of the, the, the master plan as a compliment to every one of the warrants that we're going to get over the next 10 years. They will help us, as Steve mentioned, provide, in providing a roadmap to how we should think about and make judgments about the amount of money that we're going to be spending
30 seconds.
Over that period of time. I would also say, just in reference to Steve, Steve Lyden's point, I couldn't agree more with him. One of the reasons that the master plans fail is that the implementation of those master plans is not the responsibility of all of the boards in town and primarily the Select Board. So think of the charter that's coming up and the need to wrap the job descriptions of the Select.
Mr. Hutchinson, do you need more time or are you all set?
End of the execution of this master plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin Lynch, Precinct 5.
Yes, Kevin Lynch, Precinct 5. Just a couple of quick points. First, it's been said that in one case, this is an update, in another case, no, it's brand new. I guess I want to bring your attention to $250,000 20 years ago, and now it's $500,000. That's a 100% increase. I don't think interest rates have increased that much. Another thing that struck me, one other thing before I even get going, I am not against the master plan. But we have a master plan. Let's do an update, not for this amount of money. And one of the big things that is, was said, the lack of public outreach. You know, the first master plan, 1980, 43 years ago, it's time we do something. Something happened to this town that we're not reaching out to the public. So it's on us. I don't think we should throw out the old master plan simply because of our failures. Another little tidbit was, it's a little bit disturbing. I heard the justification for the master plan. We were spending $165,000 for a traffic study. I agree with that. But $175,000 for public safety staffing, which I was, probably would have been against if I was here. But again, someone said, even today, we have the knowledge. We have a number of different plans. We have done a lot of the work. It's almost like gathering your chips and pushing them into the center of the table and says, okay, now it's time to call in the expert. Not for $500,000, and I do agree. It is not the oncoming train we're trying to avoid. We can wait the six months. So I do agree with, you know, vote, vote no. And then this is what happens here in town meeting. It's great. People come out. Now, the actual profile is raised. Now we can have a conversation about things that really are concerning. You could, we can talk to our constituents. It's case in point. The nip band. You know, I, I've done, I've done the polling.
Mr. Lynch, we're talking about Article 8.
That is correct, sir. And I'm just making a reference. Thank you very much for pointing that out. Now, I've done the polling for this master plan as well as the nip band. I hope I can do that, say that. And lo and behold, it's overwhelming against, it's just a straw poll, overwhelming against
30 seconds.
The master plan. And lastly, as far as the implementation, it's lacking. Hey, we have, we have got to hold up a mirror and says, we were the ones that should have implemented the last master plan. Where were our town officials in doing that? Pointing out the shortcomings and then trying to strengthen the master plan we now have and already have paid for? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Lynch is Precinct 5. Michael Beany, Precinct 3. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to say a few words. I, I fully support this article. I sat on the Planning Board in 1980 that, that created the Village Centers Plan. It was a massive undertaking because the town before that had no master plan whatsoever. Since that time, 43 years ago, the town has grown exponentially. We haven't kept up with the growth. We've tweaked the plan on a number of occasions, but we're in a situation now, or a point now in time where we need to take this plan apart and build it back together again. Because I think the Village Centers Plan will still be the basis of this plan, but there are a lot of things that have changed in this town that the master plan doesn't address. So I hope you'll vote for this. We need to do this, and I give it my full support. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Albert DiNardo, Town Meeting Member, coming forward. We are debating Article 8, the master plan funding. Mr. DiNardo.
Mr. Moderator, very quickly, you know, the saying about planting a tree, the best time to plant a tree was 30 years ago, the second best time is today. And that goes for a master plan too. I've, I've served 35 years in another community that had a master plan that sat on a shelf. Many of you visit the North Shore. I don't need to explain what's going on up there. Plymouth, although you have this growth, you're still at that cusp where, considering the community you are in eastern Massachusetts, this needs to be done today. And I think it's important that town meetings send a strong message that they're in favor of this. Hopefully, it will be implemented. I know the town of Brookline has a committee, an implementation, implementation committee that makes sure that it's followed. We're not all going to be here five or 10 years from now. Boards change, town meeting members change. So hopefully, the next step will be yes, that we implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. That appears to be the town meeting members. I'm going to go to my list of non-town meeting members. Brigida Keen, do you care to be heard? No. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we're going to go to the vote on Article 8, Master Plan Funding. It is a majority vote. When the light goes on, you will be voting. You'll be voting on Article 8, Master Plan Funding. You're voting electronically. People here are using your clickers. At home, you'll be using V voter. Please vote now. The light is on. This is Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting. We are continuing with the warrant chronologically. We have just completed the debate on Article 8. Town meeting members are now voting. They can vote yes, no, or they can abstain. We have 162 elected. I see that 137 have voted thus far. We are in the afternoon session. We're in the first half of the afternoon session. Article 8 is master plan funding, $430,000. When the light goes off, the voting will have been completed. It is complete. We will now get the totals. 123 yes, 14 no, zero abstentions. The motion carries. We move on to Article 9. Article 9 of the Community Preservation Articles. We have a number of them. We're going to begin with Article 9A, Housing for Habitat for Humanity. And Mr. Neerman moves a town vote to appropriate the sum of $100,000 to grant to the Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9A. It was a unanimous vote of 13 for, zero against, zero abstain. Approval of this article will authorize a grant to Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth for the purpose of conducting a single-family home at 47 Indian Avenue with an affordable housing deed restriction.
Thank you. And before I go any farther, prior to the completion of the last vote, we were told by PM Hastings, Precinct 8, remote, that she's a yes and will accept that. At this time, we welcome the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, William Cohen. Mr. Cohen.
Good afternoon. Bill Cohen with the Community Preservation Committee. Today, we're going to go through the Community Preservation Article starting at 9A. But before I begin my presentation, and I hope this doesn't go against my time, I've been told I have three minutes. I'm going to keep three minutes each article. I know many of you have already heard this presentation, but it's an opportunity for our residents to hear how their CPA funds are being utilized. I do want to reference the CPA book. You all have the book. It is a complement to your Finance Committee, a book. The Finance Committee puts out material. We complement that with a, a, a book that includes each application received by each applicant that we're going to go through now, starting with Article 9A.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen. Go ahead.
Okay. So the Community Preservation Committee is recommending 9A to fall, as fall town meeting for the purposes of the applicant is Habitat Humanity of the Greater, of Greater Plymouth. They have been partnering with the Office of Community Development to secure a block grant, which allowed them to purchase a single-family home at 47 Indian Ave in Plymouth. This is a nice example of how the organization has worked with the town to secure this building. When the building is renovated, we're going to get a permanent deed restriction. That's a requirement of the Community Preservation Act, so the building will be permanently restricted. And in the end, this is for a single-family home. Now, you'll see other articles about affordable housing, the different people and demographics looking for affordable housing. This is about homeownership for a family. And I have here today Amy Belmar, the Director of Habitat Humanity for the Greater Plymouth Area. She's available to answer your questions, but it's a request for $100,000. We've worked with Habitat Humanity in the past. They've been very efficient. We are enthusiastically supporting this article. It was unanimous, a vote of the committee.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, we're going to go to a vote. When the light goes on, you'll be voting on Article 9A, Housing for Habitat for Humanity under the Community Preservation. Light is on, you can vote. Please vote. Town meeting members are voting now. They're voting on the motion under Article 9A. It's a CPC article, and it's Housing for Habitat for Humanity, appropriating the sum of $100,000. Town meeting are in the afternoon session. We have 162 town meeting members. They are voting electronically. Upon the completion of the vote, we'll have a record and an accounting of the votes of all town meeting members who are present and voting, either in person or remote. This is a hybrid town meeting for Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting. The voting has completed. We are now waiting for the vote. 138 yes, zero no, zero abstentions. It's unanimous. And we will now move on as you look at the votes of the town meeting members. Article 9B, Housing, Plymouth Housing Authority. Mr. Neerman moves a town vote to amend the vote taken under Article 9D of the 2019 Fall Annual Town Meeting by increasing the amount appropriated to the Plymouth Housing Authority. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. And the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9B by a unanimous vote of 13 for, zero against, zero abstained. Approval of this article will authorize a grant to the Plymouth Housing Authority for the purpose of remodeling three affordable housing restricted units located in the former Oak Street School on Oak Street.
Thank you. And in the record, you have the text of the entire motion. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee is recommending Article 9B. It is another affordable housing request to town meeting of the CPA fund. You will find it in your green briefing book starting on page 35. Now, the committee was recommending this because we have worked with the Plymouth Housing Authority over the, a number of years. They have partnered with the town in many opportunities to create affordable housing. A couple of years ago, the town of Plymouth entered into agreement with the Plymouth Housing Authority to convey Oak Street School to the Housing Authority. It was a building that was built 1904. It was an operating school up until, two-room schoolhouse in a neighborhood up until 2010. The building was conveyed in 2019. It was conveyed to the Plymouth Housing Authority after the CPC came to town meeting looking for CPC funding to convert the building into three affordable units for disabled individuals, seniors, mobility issues. And we started to work forward on that. Town meeting approved that article, but when we went to bid, it was during the COVID economy, and we found that the estimates were high. The Housing Authority did try to find, seek other grants. They also worked on the building. As you can see here, this is the building that I'm speaking of. You can see here in the back, the Housing Authority is, even though they have been dealing with this issue of the amount of money they need to complete the project, they were able to secure funding to put up an ADG compliant ramp. They were able to clean up the property and remove the playground equipment for the little school and make the accommodations for the parking for the future use. They were able to work with the town to find additional funding to improve the water line. So they've been doing things over the last couple of years, but at a certain point, we realized that we need to come back to town meeting and complete the request at $381,000. Here, you can see the current interior of the building. The building was open for all town meeting members to review and see and visit. Here's the configuration of the site. Now, the configuration of the site is three affordable units. The average cost, based on the first article and this article, will be over $300,000 per unit. That's not unusual for a unit of this designed. Again, it's designed for seniors and disabled. Again, it's designed for seniors and disabled individuals with a level of oversight of these units, with caseworkers and availability to take care of equipment. So it's a little bit of oversight in terms of the people that will be living in the unit. The Housing Authority will qualify for the people, put the people in the units, and they will own and care for the building and maintain it. I have here today a representative from the Plymouth Housing Authority, Russ Shirley, who is also a member of the Community Preservation Committee, available to answer any questions regarding this project.
Any further discussion? If not, I'm gonna call for a vote. When the light goes on, you can be voting for Article Nine B, Housing, Plymouth Housing Authority, from the CPC. When the light goes on, we will begin voting. It's a majority vote. They are all roll calls since it's tabulated electronically for every town meeting member who is present in voting. You can vote now. Town meeting members are voting on Article Nine B, Community Preservation Committee Articles. We are in the afternoon session of Plymouth's Fall Annual Town Meeting, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street, October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a majority vote on this particular article. We're gonna continue with the articles in the warrant as they are presented. One hundred and sixty-two town meeting members, one thirty-nine have voted. When the light goes off, the voting will be completed, and we will get the total votes now of one thirty-four yes, three no, two abstentions. It carries. You can look at the voting record, which comes on your screen. And while we do that, we're gonna go to Article Nine C. Mr. Neerman moves a town appropriate the sum of four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, the grant to the Plymouth Guild, Inc., DBA Plymouth Center for the Arts. You have the entire text in your packet. Mr. Neerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Nine C by a unanimous vote of thirteen four, zero opposed, and zero abstained. Approval of this article will authorize a grant to the Plymouth Guild, Inc. for the restoration, rehabilitation, and preservation of the historic Russell Library located at eleven North Street.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee is making a recommendation for the use of the historical fund at four hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars under Article Nine C, which is a historical preservation request for the Plymouth Center for the Arts. So Plymouth Center for the Arts acquired the building in two thousand and seven, after CPA funds were utilized to acquire it from a private owner. Excuse me. Since the beginning of their ownership of the property, they've raised over three million dollars and put it back into this building. The building was acquired with CPA funding. They signed a one-hundred-year lease with the town, ground lease. They have an option for another hundred years. During this period of time, over the last fifteen years, as I indicated, they raised nearly three million dollars and reinvested it in the building. ADA compliant, fire suppression systems, updates in heating and cooling systems. So the Center for the Arts has been focused on the care of the building, but the Center for the Arts is a very important economic component of downtown. They're a visual arts center. They have exhibits, they have events, they have a little store there where you can buy art. There's classes that you can take at this location. So we find them a very significant organization in downtown. Actually, over the last fifteen years, they've probably been a catalyst for cultural renaissance in downtown Plymouth. People come and stay in Plymouth longer when you have entities like this operating with their events. They will continue, if this article does pass, they will continue their agreement with the town of Plymouth, that the town of Plymouth can use this building for meetings, for town sanctioned committees, based on availability, free of charge. They'll also allow the building, for any events that they sponsor, they will allow students free admission based on availability. So they will continue this relationship that they've had with our community for some time. The request is something that the committee supported. It was a full vote of the committee to support the article, and we hope that you support this article tonight. We have Kathy Dunn, who is a representative of the Center for the Arts. She's here today if there's any further questions on Article Nine C.
Thank you. Any further questions, any debate on this? If not, we're gonna go to the vote. When the light goes on, you can vote for Article Nine C. It's a majority vote. It is a CPC article, historical old Russell Library. Can vote now. Town meeting members are now voting. One hundred and sixty-two town meeting members. You can see the numbers going up as people vote. Once we complete the twenty seconds on the voting, we will then get the record of the voting for this Article Nine C. It's one of the CPC articles, the majority vote. Plymouth Town Meeting coming to you live on Saturday, October twenty-first. When the light goes off, the voting will be completed. We now have one hundred and forty-two town meeting members who are present and voting. And at this time, we will get the vote. One forty-one yes, one no, zero abstentions. It carries. And as you look at the voting, we'll go to Article Nine D. Historical Pilgrim Hall. Mr. Neerman moves a town vote appropriate three million two hundred thousand for a grant to Pilgrim Hall Museum. Mr. Neerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Nine D in a vote of nine four, four against, and zero abstain. Approval of this article will authorize the town to borrow said funds to grant to the Pilgrim Hall Museum for the rehabilitation, restoration, and preservation of the Pilgrim Hall Museum located at seventy-five Court Street.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. Community Preservation Committee is recommending three point two million dollars to town meeting for historical restoration, rehabilitation, and preservation of the eighteen twenty-four Pilgrim Hall Museum in our downtown. Now, the Community Preservation Committee did recommend this because we do have a strategy of handling the cost that is incurred here. At three point two million dollars, it's a significant amount of money, but it's very similar to what we did over at the Spire Theater, at the Center for the Arts, and earlier articles in the National Memorial Meeting House in our town square, and our eighteen twenty courthouse town hall at nearly five million dollars. Now, the way that we do this is that we introduce the article to town meeting for borrowing authorization, and then knowing that these bills are not coming in, the invoices for the work for at least a year, we're able to schedule out over the next couple of town meetings to reduce that borrowing authorization that we're requesting for these renovations. So we do have a strategy that we've been working with the finance department to manage the costs associated with this, that if this article does pass, we'll be back in the spring and fall of two thousand and twenty-four, buying down that authorization, moving available funds into an account, so as those invoices come in, we can pay them as we move through the project without having to do any short-term borrowing. We may, at some point, have to entertain that, but once we do the short-term borrowing, we have a track record of paying that off in a timely manner. I think it's important to understand that this is a project not only about the roof in removing a skylight that was introduced that's causing a lot of problems, but also improving the heating and cooling systems, because this building is a very significant building. It houses nearly four hundred years of documents, archives, historical material, and artwork that represent the history of Plymouth and beyond Plymouth and before Plymouth. It is a museum that not only represents our history, but also a critical component of American history. This is one of the most significant museums in the country in terms of its collection. It is the oldest continually operated building. We find that this building is a priority for the preservation of these materials. In addition of making the building tight to the weather, improving the condition of the building allows us to display the historical materials in the building efficiently. Right now-
Thirty seconds.
We're operating in an area of... Could I have another minute?
Okay.
One minute?
Go ahead.
It's very... We do have the Director, Donna Curtin, with Pilgrim Hall Museum. She's here today to answer your questions and speak on the matter, but it's very critical to understand that this is a project not only of a roof, but a condition of a building and maintaining it in a way that's efficient. If we were to take away from this project and reduce the funding for it, we would be hurting the overall project. And there's one thing that we've learned in the past as a CPC coming to town meeting is making sure we ask for the appropriate amount of money to do the job correctly to get the best results. So thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, I'm gonna call on Donna Curtin. She is the Executive Director for the Pilgrim Hall Museum. She is also a town meeting member, Precinct Three. Donna Curtin, welcome to Article Nine D.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good afternoon, town meeting members. Pilgrim Hall Museum is really the cornerstone of Plymouth's nationally significant history. We are the faithful stewards of this community's history, and I've heard from many of you, as I've been going out to the caucuses, that you very much appreciate the unique importance and the value of this institution to our town and to our country. You all know that the museum is facing a critical need that compromises the historic hall and the irreplaceable historical materials under our care. Now, since discovering this issue, we've taken aggressive action, putting on a temporary roof to buy us time to plan a carefully integrated scope of work to make the building watertight and also to provide protections for the objects and the artwork that tell our story, Plymouth's story, to the world. Our request for three point two million is based on many months of planning with architects, engineers, conservation planners, and conservators. The goal is to resolve preservation and conservation issues that are connected in the actual physical space. It's a logistically complex project that requires the removal of massive works of art and months of disruption and closure of our main hall. We have a schedule for these interrelated areas of work to occur in the most efficient sequence to ensure the safety of these collections and to avoid additional disruption and closure in the near future, as would be the case, for example, if climate control and conservation lighting are not addressed now when we have the room torn apart. If the amendment to reduce our requested amount passes, it will most certainly delay, if not derail, this carefully planned project, a critical project for the future of an iconic Plymouth institution. As far as fundraising goes, Pilgrim Hall Museum is as active in this regard as any of the other nonprofits who have received CPC funds. We independently raise the revenue for our general operations each year. We have a two-hundred-year track record of success in doing so. For this project, we've committed to raising an additional two million dollars towards the conservation of the artwork and exhibit design, and that will occur after the construction phase and extend into two thousand and twenty-five. Our fundraising is on track with this timeframe-
Thirty seconds.
With multiple individual donations, and I will also mention, we did receive a word of a hundred thousand dollar private foundation challenge grant that is contingent on your decision today. Grant agencies, sponsors, and donors all look for indications of community support in making their decisions, and approval of this article will unquestionably aid our efforts, or the reverse will also be true. May I have a little more time, Mr. Moderator?
How much more?
Thirty seconds?
Yep.
We're asking Plymouth Town Meeting to proudly and fully support the museum that has invested unwaveringly in the preservation of our history and has been an integral part of our community's identity since well beyond all of our collective memories. Lastly, please know, I will be abstaining from this vote, and that means every single one of your votes does count. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia McCarthy, Precinct Eighteen, moves to amend the main motion to reduce the appropriation borrowed by one million two hundred thousand. Patricia McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting members. The Pilgrim Hall Museum is a wonderful historic asset to our town and a landmark in downtown. With regards to Article D, CPC Article D, the two thousand twenty-three CPC project application name, quote, Pilgrim Hall Museum Roof/Skylight Project, unquote, on page one hundred in your CPC book. The roof has needed work for many years. Pilgrim Hall began the CPC application process for two point two million dollars in June of two thousand and twenty-two. The process was tabled in August of two thousand and twenty-two by the CPC, waiting further information needed from Pilgrim Hall. The new two thousand and twenty-three application process began on July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The estimates on pages one eleven and one twelve in the CPC book indicate that the roof skylight project can be done for under the two million dollars allotment I have proposed. It appears that Pilgrim Hall has not been raising funds ongoing in recent years to do this roof project, and the additional extras indicated on pages one eleven and one twelve in the CPC book. Perhaps it is because there hasn't been an active development committee. I remember many past successful house tours designer, house fundraisers, and programs. The CPC, and the CPA Act in particular, provides funding using our tax dollars to support many worthwhile projects. One of the most important parts of the Community Preservation Act is, and this is from the law itself, is to help create and maintain low and moderate income housing for individuals and families, including low or moderate senior housing. The Select Board and many groups, organizations, and citizens are dedicated to increasing community housing. The one point two million appropriations saved by my proposed amendment could be available to help alleviate this housing crisis in Plymouth for us, the citizens. There are some projects in the works.
Thirty seconds.
Thanks for being concerned, town meeting members, and for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to close debate from Catherine Holmes. I would note that in the queue, it's unclear whether I have one town meeting member who wants to speak. It says ten. Not sure what the intent was. We have two standing and another one on a list. And at this time, we're gonna move forward on whether to close debate. It'll be a motion to close debate on Patricia McCarthy's motion to amend. You can now vote on whether to close debate on the motion to amend. The motion was to reduce the appropriation borrowed by one million two hundred thousand. We are now voting on whether to close debate on that. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds vote. Town meeting is now voting. When the light is off, we will then see the results. We have one hundred and sixty-two members. One hundred and thirty-nine, one hundred and forty have voted, and are present and voting on whether to close debate on the motion to amend. Motion to amend was to reduce the appropriation. When the light goes off, it is off. We will now see the results of whether to close debate. Ninety-one say yes, no, fifty-one abstentions, zero. Debate will continue. We're debating the motion to amend to reduce by one million two hundred thousand. Lawrence Peiser, Precinct Three, town meeting member, on the motion to amend to reduce the borrowing by one million two hundred thousand. Mr. Peiser?
Full disclosure, before I was the town clerk, I was the Director of the Pilgrim Society. Let me deal with some of the arguments that you've heard. One, why didn't the society prepare? Know something about fundraising. You don't get to be a museum director without knowing something about fundraising. Fundraising is successful when it's based on projects. Granting agencies don't provide funds just in case. Two, is the Pilgrim Society just an exclusive group? Why should we deal with them? When Judge Reardon was the President of the group, he commented riley that the organization was in the capable hands of Reardon, Gomes, and Peiser, none of whom were pilgrim descendants. Three, is the Pilgrim Society part of all of Plymouth? You bet it is. When I was a museum consultant, I told other museums to find out what makes them special. The Pilgrim Society specializes in the history of Plymouth. Is the collection of Pilgrim Hall Museum worth it? The value of the artifacts goes beyond the connection with the pilgrims. Chairs, arms, needlework, clothing, cradles provide a vital role in understanding early America. Manuscripts include the founding documents of our town and our area. Photographs go back to the Civil War period. Finally, does this vote preclude future grants from community preservation for other projects? It does not. We spend on the needs that are placed before us. We shall continue to do so. A vote for preservation is not a vote against anything else. I hope you vote in favor of- I hope you vote in favor of Part D and against the amendment. Thank you.
Lawrence Peiser, Precinct 3. Lawrence Delafield, Precinct 16. Welcome, Mr. Delafield.
Yes, in disclosure, I serve as a trustee of the museum, and as such, I have been part of putting this particular proposal together. I want to just make it absolutely clear, in terms of the motion, that this would have devastating effects if we do not fund this fully. At the very minimum, it would postpone this project probably long enough to utilize and exceed the amount of money that would be saved by going forth with this amendment. So I want to start off just by saying, we need to support the project in full, and we need to defeat the amendment.
Thank you. Francis O'Brien, Precinct 11, please come forward. We're voting on--
Frank O'Brien, Precinct 11.
Go ahead.
We should vote no on this particular amendment and vote yes to support Pilgrim Hall Museum. History is Plymouth. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thomas Begley, please come forward. We're debating Article 9D. Mr. Begley.
Thank you. Tom Begley, Precinct 14. I just want to, I mean, I think Frank kind of said it quicker than I'm going to say it, but vote against this amendment and for the main motion. You know, I realize it's a lot of money, and of course, demands debate our role here, but I think it's a perfect example of why this town voted in the CPA like two decades ago. We, as a body and as a town, have an opportunity to help protect our priceless shared cultural heritage. A vote in support of this full project is not just a vote for a new roof. It's a vote to help preserve our town's history so that future generations, your grandkids, maybe great-grandkids, and kids have the same opportunity as we enjoy today. The price tag speaks to the complexity of the project and the delicate history contained under this slate roof, and Pilgrim Hall has shown that they've done all the patching they can at this point. I would also remind everyone that it's the history and culture and all of the tangled interpretations that it brings that makes this town unique. It is the work of our cultural organizations that put heads in beds and bring visitors here. It's not just a new roof. It's investment in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Renault, Precinct 6, followed by Stephen Lyden, Precinct 17.
Everybody loves the Pilgrim Museum. We all do, and I think to help us decide, it would be helpful if we could find out why the FinCom had four votes against. Can we do that?
Can you repeat that?
So FinCom was four noes.
The question was whether or not--
Yeah, I hear the question. So the four votes against was based on the price, the cost of the project. FinCom, those members felt there was too much, too much money.
Thank you.
Stephen Lyden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I look at this project, and I have a question. If Mr. Cohen could answer. It was said that the $1.2 million that would not be spent would be put towards the housing. This is historical preservation. It does not come through the housing budget. Don't they each have a portion of this?
So, just a clarification, we're making a recommendation for $3.2 million for this repair, this renovation of the building, and your question is--
Does this come out of historic preservation?
Correct.
Or does this come out of housing?
No. So the way that the community preservation works over the last 22 years, as the town collects the revenue, they're required under Mass. General Law 44B to put 10% in housing, 10% for open space, 10% for historical preservation. So the 10% lie there. You can't touch those. Those are for housing, historical, open space. There's a discretionary amount remaining, the 70%, where we can use a combination thereof.
So we would not lose housing funds if we fund this project 100%?
No, and just going back, Steve, to what I was saying earlier, we have a strategy of making these recommendations, and then we can pay that down quickly. So the reason we do that is so that if we get an application that you guys need to see--
I understand. I was just worried about the 10%.
Right, right. I just want to make it, the reason I pointed that out is because we manage the request in a way that if another application comes in for housing or historical or open space, and it's imperative, Town Meeting, in the 22 years we've been doing this, we've never denied Town Meeting to take up another issue because we've, you know, overextended ourselves.
Okay. And the other thing is, what happens to this project if it isn't done? If you don't get your grant, Donna, what's going to happen to this project?
Donna Curtin is, again, the Executive Director for Pilgrim Hall Museum, responding to Stephen Lyden. Donna Curtin.
Well, I think we move from critical need to crisis.
Okay.
I don't know if you want more detail on that, Steve, but--
No, that's--
You know, I mean, we're going to have to put a pin in it. We're going to have to go back to the drawing board. There's going to be another round of planning and design, which we had invested in before we came forward to CPC in order to get to this point. So there has been fundraising and investment on the museum side to get us to this point, and there will be on the other side. But we'd have to go back to planning and design, and we'd have to rethink--
Thirty seconds.
But I would say it would be pretty much a disaster.
I know this is a lot of money. It's $3.2 million. It's a lot of money, but when this project is done, we have something. The tourists have something. The town has something. We spent over $4 million for the Symes House, and what do we got? A building that's costing us $50,000 to be maintained with two apartments? I said, so think of your priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Neely, Precinct 15. We're debating the motion to amend that was presented by Patricia McCarthy. Mr. Neely, welcome. Richard Neely is participating remotely. He is coming in on the video conferencing platform through Zoom. He has spoken to us previously, and we'll be hearing from him again. Richard Neely is a Town Meeting member. This is Plymouth-- Mr. Neely. Go ahead, Mr. Neely. Richard Neely. The internet connection is unstable, is what I'm being told. We're not hearing from Mr. Neely, so we may have to come back to him another time. And if we do not have another speaker, we'll be moving to the vote on the motion to amend. And so, Mr. Neely, is Mr. Neely with us? He's muted. We're asking him to unmute. Mr. Neely, if you can hear. If you can unmute, Mr. Neely. This is Plymouth's Fall Annual Town Meeting. It's coming to you live. It's a hybrid. We have people participating remotely. We have people in person. Richard Neely, Precinct 15, if you can unmute yourself so we can hear you. And if not, I think we're going to have to move to the vote on the motion to amend. So let's go ahead and vote and turn the light on. You're going to vote on the motion to amend whether reduced by $1,200,000. The light will be going on. It's on now. Please vote. You're voting on the motion to amend Article 9D to reduce the appropriation borrowed by $1,200,000. Town Meeting members are voting. This particular motion is a majority vote. The main motion will be two-thirds, but this is a majority on whether to reduce the amount appropriated by $1,200,000. It is a motion from Patricia McCarthy, Precinct 18. While the light is on, people are voting. We have 142 who are voting. Out of 162, when the light is off, we'll get the total. It's a majority vote in order to be successful, and at this time, the voting has concluded, and we'll have the totals. 13 say yes, 125 say no, three abstentions. The motion does not carry. We now continue with debate on the main motion. I do have, well, one Town Meeting member with a clicker here. I think started too soon, but again, can we bring in Richard Neely, Precinct 15, to speak on the main motion now? Is Mr. Neely with us and available? We're scrolling through the precincts. We've gone through all of the 18 precincts to show the vote and the record of Town Meeting members. Again, if we do not have Mr. Neely, we're going to be going to the votes, and I'm not-- No, that point of order is a Town Meeting member who's here that do their clicker too soon. So, do we have Mr. Neely? He's still muted. So we're going to go to the vote. OTI, if you can turn on the light.
Point of order.
Point of order, yes.
I just wanted to let you know that my vote was supposed to be no. It came up as yes.
Okay.
Susan Wentworth, sorry.
Yes, Susan Networth.
Precinct 13.
Wentworth is a yes. Yes or no?
It was a no.
No, you're a no. Susan Wentworth was a no. Thank you. Okay, let's go to the voting on the main motion. OTI is going to turn on the light, and we'll start the voting. You can vote now. You're voting on the main motion under Article 9D, which is a CPC article for Pilgrim Hall Museum. Town Meeting members are voting. This is borrowing, so it does require a two-thirds vote in order to be successful. And you'll see that we have, so far, 140 Town Meeting members voting out of the 162, 141, 142. We have 142 Town Meeting members participating and voting on this Article 9D. It's for $3,200,000, and we're going to continue with the CPC articles. Voting has ended, and the total is as follows. 138 yes, two no, two abstentions. It carries, and we're going to move on. Article 9E, CPC Open Space Land Off of Rocky Pond Road. Mr. Neerman moves to town appropriate $175,000 to purchase land for open space. You have the entire text. Mr. Neerman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 9E by a unanimous vote of 13 for, zero against, zero abstain. Approval of this article will authorize the town to purchase 50.2 acres of land located at 36R Rocky Pond Road for open space and to grant a conservation restriction on said property.
Mr. Cohen, on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, is here to speak with respect to this open space land off of Rocky Pond Road. This will be a majority vote. They're all roll call since they're electronic. Again, Community Preservation Committee Chair, William Cohen, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I thought I mistlaid my remote, but I found the remote. Okay. Article 9E is a community preservation request for $175,000 for land acquisition under the open space use of the CPA fund. Now, the property was, has been utilized as a cranberry operation for a number of years by a family here in Plymouth. There's over 50.2 acres, more or less, off of Rocky Pond Road. So if you were heading out on Summer Street, past Governor Kava, past the Skateboard Park, you would go at Vine Hill Cemetery. You would go down to Billington and take that out as far as Black Cat Road. Beyond that, before you get to Drew Road on your right, on your left, there is Great South Pond and Little South Pond. This is just after that, on the other side of the road, surrounded by conservation land. They acquired, they inquired with the CPC a number of years ago. They were able to work with the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs with the Town of Plymouth to go after a United States Department of Agricultural Grant run by the Cranberry Growers Association, where they buy away the agricultural rights. What they're trying to do there is eliminate cranberry growing in a bog, which is a water recharge area. So they were able to accomplish that, and then after that, we had it appraised after those rights were removed. It came in over $200,000, but the family agreed to a bargain sale at $175,000. So that was a bargain sale to the Town of Plymouth, and the property, as you can see, here's Great, here's South Pond. Here comes Rocky Pond. Here's the property out here. These cranberry bogs have already been taken out of commission, and they're beginning to restore them. Here again is an aerial view where you see Little South Pond. You see Great South Pond. You see the property over here. This is the 50 acres, more or less, but there's lots of conservation area that surrounds it, not only these important water resources in this vicinity, but there's conservation land. As you can see here, the land is located here, and this is town-controlled conservation land, and obviously, this area is important to protecting water, sole-source water aquifer here in Plymouth. So--
Thirty seconds.
We hope that you support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 9E? If not, we're going to go to the vote. OTI, if you can turn on the light when it's time to vote, and we'll begin voting on Article 9E, which is a majority vote. You can vote now. Article 9E, Open Space Land Off of Rocky Pond Road. Town Meeting is moving through the Article 9 proposals from the Community Preservation Committee. We are on E, 9E, which is Open Space Land Off of Rocky Pond. This is coming to you live on Saturday, October 21, 2023. We are Plymouth North High School. It is your Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting, coming to you live from Aubrey Street. We have 162 members. We have 138 who have voted. When the light goes off, the voting will be completed, at which time we'll provide a total of the vote, and we will show how Town Meeting members voted. 138 in favor, zero no, zero abstention. It is unanimous. We will move on to Article 9F, Open Space Land Off of Rocky Hill Road. Mr. Neerman moves to town appropriate $1,210,000 to purchase land. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 9F by a vote of 12 votes for, one vote against, and zero abstain. Approval of this article will authorize the town to purchase 23 acres of land located at 280 Rocky Hill Road for open space and to grant a conservation restriction on said property.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending 9F. It's a $1.2 million request for 26 acres, more or less, off of Rocky Hill Road. This 23-acre parcel has nearly 800 feet of frontage on Plymouth Bay, nearly 750 feet of frontage on Rocky Hill Road. It is at the peninsula of Rocky, the Pine Hills, as it enters into Cape Cod Bay. It has sweeping views of Plymouth Bay, Cape Cod Bay. It has a very distinct environmental condition. The ecological significance of this area includes coastal natural community systems, coastal maritime shrublands, coastal bank and shoreline habitats. There's vernal pools and wetlands. It's a very interesting parcel in terms of the number of ecosystems that you pass through, and you'll be able to pass through it because we're going to have, we have walking trails there that were already pre-existing. There was a house on the site. That house was removed. We do intend to build a parking area where you can pull off safely and get out and passively recreate and walk the site. The property is, again, located, sorry, I should have-- There it is, right there. There's the property as it enters into Cape Cod Bay. There it is again, just north of the nuclear power plant, across the street from the 1,500 acres. Obviously, the 1,500 acres is landlocked, other than where the plant is located. This would open up a wildlife corridor. Whatever happens to the 1,500 acres in terms of preservation, we would have a component where the 1,500 acres did touch the Atlantic Ocean. So that concludes my presentation. The only thing I'd like to add is that there were some questions about the appraisal process. The appraisal process was based on a determination that the deed, it was a land, the land is owned by Manomet Inc., which is a nonprofit organization, a science research organization here in Plymouth. The land was left to them as a gift for preservation, but they had an obligation after 30 years to formalize that. That did not happen. Those restrictions expired in 2005. Town in-house council has had a chance to look at the deed as it relates to what the highest and best use is. The property can be developed. We did appraisal. That did show what the cost was based on the highest and best use in development at 1.2. We did explore what it would be if it was conserved, but it determined by the attorneys, by the land acquisition--
Thirty seconds.
One more minute, please, if I could have.
What, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just one more minute.
One more minute, okay.
So we had the deed looked at before we went, finished the appraisal process. It was looked at by, again, in-house counsel. It was looked at by the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs. It was looked at by the state. It was looked at by a number of attorneys that weighed in on this opinion over a 30-year period of time, that there was a point in time where it was identified as preserved land, but the timeframe ran out, and no formal, permanent restriction was put on the property. I do have David Gould here today to speak to it, and I also have in-house counsel to answer any questions regarding that matter. But that concludes our presentation. We do think it's a very important piece of land to acquire because it is waterfront, and there's very little waterfront-- because it is waterfront and there's very little waterfront where the residents have access to. Thank you.
Michael Babini, Precinct 3, followed by Christopher Houle, Precinct 14.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am not in favor of this article. I am in favor of buying the property. But unfortunately, by coming to town meeting with a sale price, it says here that the sale price hasn't been determined yet, to be determined. But this town meeting is being asked to appropriate $1.2 million, or 1 point, a little over $1.2 million, to acquire this property. Now, the Sears family gave this property to the MBO in 1975 with a restrict, for $1, with a restriction this would be forever kept in open space. That's an ethical issue as far as I'm concerned. The, the, there is some concern about whether or not certificates were filed at the state level. I don't believe they were, but the intent is clear. And there, I've talked to other lawyers that don't believe it's so cut and dry as Mr. Cohen pointed out. That aside, the town of Plymouth did an appraisal and the appraisal was clear. If the property is sold as a buildable piece of land, it should be, it could bring $1.2 million. However, if the, if the land is sold as a open space piece of land, it only would be worth $125,000. Now, I think there's a happy medium there. But one thing we should know is that in the, in the article itself, it, it references the, the strategic ongoing planning of the MBO. And they basically say in that article that as part of the strategic ongoing planning, Manomet is evaluating the status of the organizational assets and has determined that selling the site, the property for conservation purposes would benefit the public in open space preservation in Plymouth. So they're selling it to us so it can be kept in open space, which I think they have an obligation to do in any case. When you give property to a, a nonprofit organization and ask them to keep it in its natural state, you have an ethical responsibility to do that. And if people start selling land that is given to them, I don't think people are going to want to give them land anymore. So my bottom line here is that let's send this back. Don't approve $1.2 million. Authorize whoever, the CPC, to negotiate with the MBO and come up with a value that in some way represents what our goal is of both organizations, to keep this land in its natural state. I hope you'll vote against this. I hope it comes back later with a, with a better price. Thank you.
Thank you. David Gould is Director of Marine Environmental Affairs. Mr. Gould?
Good afternoon, David Gould, Director of Marine Environmental Affairs. Just to give town meeting an update on the legal status of the property. So a few days ago, we were made aware of some of the concerns about the reference in the deed that's, that specified the three sisters were donating it with a conservation restriction. So a little bit of background on that is that according to the state law, that restriction would last for 30 years unless it, unless two specific components were fulfilled and that it was executed properly. One was that in 1975, Manomet and the sisters came to the town and the select board approved it. And then it went to the Division of Conservation Services for the state and was approved. We've checked the deed. Unfortunately, that was not done. There is no record of that being done. We checked with the Director of Conservation Services yesterday with Bob Wilbur. He went through their database and they showed no record. So unfortunately, what happened was that agreement under state law lasted for 30 years and expired and was never renewed. So whether or not the sisters' intent or Manomet's role in it now, the fact of the matter is the land could be sold for development at this point in time regardless of what intent was in 1975. The restriction was no longer valid after 2005 and the property can in fact be developed.
Thank you. Mark Pulsonelli is Precinct 1, followed by Christopher Houle, Precinct 14. If we can first bring in Mr. Pulsonelli, he is participating remotely. And when we have him, we will hear from Mark Pulsonelli, Precinct 1. We are debating Article 9F. We are in a hybrid town meeting. We have members in person. We have members participating remotely through V voter and through Zoom. Mr. Pulsonelli, welcome. Go ahead. Pulsonelli? We're ready for you if you want to begin speaking. We are supported here by PAC TV on the video conferencing and we have multiple town meeting members who have been participating remotely throughout this town meeting. Mr. Pulsonelli is from Precinct 1. And is he ready? Okay, Mr. Pulsonelli, go ahead and speak. For some reason, he's not coming through. So if we don't have him, we'll bring in Christopher Houle, Precinct 14. Mr. Houle, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
And, and I, I first just want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Cohen for, you know, all his great work that he does at CPC. I really always support, generally support these articles. I've voted yes on all the previous articles today. I agree with Mr. Babini's comments though, however, because this, although it is critically important to protect this piece of property, it is being held by an organization that is a conservation-based organization. And Mr. Babini said a lot of the same comments that I was going to share today, but I am going to read just one quick excerpt from our, our town meeting book here. And it says, "Manomet has determined that selling the property for conservation purposes would benefit the public in open space preservation in Plymouth." For conservation purposes, I want to stress that. In line with Manomet's organizational needs and values. They are not a typical private property owner that would turn around and sell this property for development. And, and I'm not going to rehash Mr. Babini's comments because I think they're accurate. I, I asked Mr. Cohen and our caucus if this price, where was the price for this property determined? Is that strictly from the appraisal or is this Manomet's asking price for the property? And, and the answer I received is that this was not their asking price. This was our first offer to them at $1.2 million. This is an organization that I think could come to the table to negotiate. So I would ask that you vote no now. Come back in the spring, when, allow a few months to happen, allow a few months of negotiation to happen and come to us with a better price. We just approved the previous article where that exact scenario just played out and that hasn't occurred here for this article. So let's vote yes, but let's do it in the spring and let's vote no right now to get a better price for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Houle. Now move to Mark Pulsonelli, Precinct 1. Good afternoon, Mr. Pulsonelli.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering if Mr. Cohen or someone could explain the, the major difference between the last article and this one being that this is about 25 acres for 1.2 million, where we just approved a purchase for about 50 acres and that was only 175,000. I'm wondering what the major difference is in the value of this land.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. The, the value was determined by the appraisal process that was outlined over a period of time. We have been talking to Manomet Inc. regarding this property for a number of years. We entered into an appraisal process six months ago and started working on this process and developed an appraisal. The appraisal is the amount of money that we are requesting. That's what they have agreed to. The difference between obviously the pond, the Rocky Hill, Rocky Pond property is that was an agricultural bog, uplands in the woods, wooded area. The agricultural rights had been diminished from the value of that property. So when that property got appraised, the rights had been taken away, so it diminished in value. Obviously, this is waterfront property. And after we had done our due diligence around determining what could be done with the property, we based our appraisal on that and that's how we came to the $1.2 million for this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Hall, Precinct 16?
Thank you. Some of you may remember that I used to be chairman of the Open Space Committee. And whenever we brought a property for tax title transference to the conservation, to the conservation committee, we would reference the master plan. And one section of the master plan that we have now in force calls for acquiring property along the ocean. And so this meets, this particular article meets with our master plan's goal in acquiring property. So I have a couple of questions for Mr. Cohen. One, what access will the public have to the oceanfront from this property? Will there be parking? And also, would you please address Mr. Babini's concerns? For myself, the ethical question is not the facts. We all have different ethics and opinions about ethics, but we also have the facts. So if you would address that. Thank you.
Okay. So the intent is that we would work with the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs to build a carport. They have been out to the site to check the sightlines so people can safely pull on the property. There'll be a parking area similar like the Center Hill Preserve. And there'll be trails, there'll be gates there to keep people from traveling too deep into the property. If you do hike out on the property, it takes you to the peninsula where you're looking out at Cape Cod Bay, Plymouth Bay, the Gurnet. And there is an area there that's already cleared that was where a residential house was. So this is really well-suited for passive recreational hiking and exploring and seeing the property. So that is the, the access that we'll be promoting at the site just to, I guess reassure you on the appraisal process. This is an appraisal process we've been doing for many years with applicants. They come forward, we enter into an appraisal process. We have to do our due diligence to determine how this appraisal process is going to be conducted, determine the value of the property and, and pay fair market value for the property in which it could be developed. This organization has a board of directors. They've made the determination that they want to sell the land. We've had this issue over the years, many times, working with different organizations, nonprofit boards of directors, trying to determine how they're going to dispense of the land. They may have acquired the land as a gift or a donation and they might be the Boy Scouts or they might be some other organization. We've entered into these agreements, trying to get them to sell it for conservation rather than moving it off to the, you know, the open market, the highest and best use, which would be residential development.
Richard Cirque, Precinct 3?
I want to echo what Mr. Gould said. His analysis was exactly correct. I've looked at the deed and looked at the attendant documents and the fact of the matter is that it was the responsibility of the parties that acquired that land when, when the deed was first executed, to get the selectmen's approval and to get the state's approval. And that was not done. That being the case, the restriction, like any other restriction, lapsed after 30 years. Now, with respect to the moral purpose and so forth of the deed restriction, you have to remember this is not a taking. This would be a sale, a purchase and sale agreement. And Manomet Inc., the owner of the property, stands to gain for its charitable purposes, the money that's mentioned in this article. So that's furthering the conservation motives of the grantors because it's putting more money in their pockets for purposes of achieving the goals that they have set forth. Thank you.
Michael Babini, Precinct 3?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not arguing the legality of this. I'm arguing the point that both the MBO and the town have the same vision for this property. And I think it would behoove us to go back to the MBO, Manomet Inc., and negotiate, try to negotiate a lower number. That's my point. You know, I think it's worth a try and it would be a shame for us to spend this money now without going through that process. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on Article 9F? I'm not seeing anyone. We're going to go to the vote. If we can get the light from OTI, we'll begin the voting when the light goes on. And we'll be voting on Article 9F, Open Space Land Off of Rocky Hill Road. It's a majority vote. Vote now. You're voting on whether to fund the open space request for the Community Preservation Committee proposal of the land off of Rocky Hill Road. 162 town meeting members who are elected and we are now voting. And the town meeting members present in voting, we're up to 136 who are voting. And we're continuing until the light goes off, at which time we'll get the totals. It is a majority vote and we're looking for, when the vote completed, we will announce the vote. We will have an opportunity to see how every town meeting member voted by scrolling through the precincts. 97 say yes, 38 say no, 4 abstentions, it carries. You can look at how people vote while I read into the record the next motion. Article 9G CPC Recreation Hedges Pond Demolition. Mr. Neiman moves town appropriate 157,500 for the demolition of buildings at Hedges Pond Recreation, Recreational and Preserve off Long Pond Road, including all incidental and related costs and to preserve recreation, open space and to meet the appropriation of 157,500 shall be appropriated for the fiscal year 2024. Mr. Neiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9G by a unanimous vote of 13 votes for, 0 against, 0 abstained. Approval of this article will authorize the town to demolish and properly dispose of seven buildings located at Hedges Pond Recreation Area, which pose both physical and environmental risks to the public due to the presence of lead paint.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. The Community Preservation Committee is recommending 9G for 157,500 alls for the demolition of buildings at Hedges Pond. Now, Hedges Pond was acquired back about 15 years ago with CPA funds. We acquired the 30-acre pond, the 68 acres. We've been to town meeting at different times, adding land to this park over a period of time, trying to connect it to Elman Rain Ballfield. There was a 28-acre campsite there that was dismantled and we invested CPA funds, a million dollars, to turn it into an active recreational park. It's been like that for 15 years. Department of Rec runs a very successful program. They have a day camp there. It's a pay-as-you-go day camp. They bring in revenue. It goes in a revolving fund. The park is sustainable in this way, kind of a self-sustaining park in terms of its economic burden on the town of Plymouth. It's a great example of how the town has been able to use a site like this to their advantage and bring wider recreational services to the town. Now, on the site, there were some cabins there that were left over from the original construction. We were planning to hopefully save them for like a little environmental education center. So when the kids came for swimming and, you know, basketball and, and tennis, that there would be this other component of the day camp where you could take environmental education during the camping hours. But time has passed. Those buildings have fallen into disrepair and they were testing for lead and asbestos. Now, we need to properly dispose of them. The committee wanted to move forward and do this. This is unusual for the committee to come in and ask for just money for disposal. We hope that once we get past this, we can enter into an agreement with the town or a discussion with the town and the community about what the next phase is at Hedges Pond. There's a great hall there. This money is not to take down the great hall. We hope to start a process with the town, looking at the great hall, having community discussions of how we can improve the great hall and expand the recreational use at Hedges Pond. So hopefully in the future, you'll see an, an application where we're coming before you, looking for the next phase for Hedges Pond. It's been a very successful program, project. We want to continue that. This part of Plymouth is very underserved when it comes to recreational amenities for the town. Southern Plymouth does not have this access. It's a very unique site with, we own the entire pond, the land around it. So we want to make sure that the environmental conditions around there are not making the pond at risk for environmental hazard. So I hope that you support this article. That concludes our discussion. And the, the amount of money that's, that's been suggested was provided by the town of Plymouth, the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs and the Town Managers Office. And it's based on expected tipping costs to properly dispose of lead and asbestos. We may not end up using the full amount, but we wanted to default on, to the side of caution and ask for the complete amount, 157,500 to dispose of it safely.
Kevin Leary, Precinct 1?
Mike Leary.
Michael Leary.
Anyways, yeah, I'm going to vote no on this and I'm going to tell you why. First of all, CPA was created for basically forward movement. We acquire, we conserve, and we restore. The town's owned this piece of property for what, 15 years, I think Bill said? And basically, the maintenance went downhill. This is a maintenance idol. It doesn't belong in CPA. It belongs back in the regular budget. So I urge everybody to vote no and have them put it back there because this isn't for restoring, so.
Thank you. Michael Leary, Precinct 5. Virginia Davis?
I just want to echo what Mr. Leary said.
I just want to echo what Mr. Leary said. The CPA is called the Community Preservation. This is for demolition. It should go back to the DBW. And that amount of money could be used to do an appraisal of the great hall, to see what we can do to perhaps restore that. I think I always support the CPA 100%, but not for demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. George McKay, please come forward.
I just want to echo what everybody has said. I don't think the CPA should be in the demolition business. I think it's as simple as that.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen.
I sympathize with your concerns. This is unique where we're coming to town meeting, but time is of the essence, that if we can get these buildings down and out of the way, we can begin the planning process. So obviously, we want to engage the town, because we do see a second phase of this. I know that there is enthusiasm within the town to discuss what to do with Hedges Pond next, to improve the circumstance, look at the great hall, improve the great hall. So we're looking forward to that discussion. Usually, you see us coming to town meeting, we're doing some demolition, but we're also doing some renovations in preservation and rehabilitation and creation. But with the hazard of the building there and the condition that it is, kids could get over there, there's lead and asbestos, we need to address that issue in a timely manner to open up this wider discussion about what to do with Hedges Pond in the next phase. Believe me, we're committed to expanding the capability, Hedges Pond. It is one of the greatest examples of the CPA inaction in Plymouth. Buying this land, buying that pond, expanding recreational uses is, it is, you know, Center Hill Preserve is a great place to visit and recharge your batteries, but Hedges Pond is where families go and recreate and rely on and swim. So this is an important part of the component of the town, and I think it's important that we move forward addressing this safety issue and then come back at a later date with some attempt to, you know, improve the circumstance there.
Further discussion, George McKay.
I don't think anybody's debating whether we need the buildings to come down. I think it's a matter of who's going to do it and who's going to pay for it. I'm willing to pay through my taxes to have the buildings come down. I'm not willing to have it pay through the CPC. So I'd like to hear from the town if there's any way that they can tear these buildings down at taxpayer expense other than through the CPC.
Question from George McKay responding Derek Brindisi is our town manager. Derek Brindisi.
Good evening. Great question, Mr. McKay. So at this time, no, the town does not have that ability to do that. We don't, given the hazardous materials that currently exist on those structures, we don't have the staff qualified to tear those structures down, which is why the cost is what it is. We would hire an outside firm to tear the buildings down and then dispose of those hazardous materials. If town meeting were to vote against this, then we'd have to come back in April for a free cash appropriation.
Everett Malaguti, precinct two. We're debating Article 9G.
Everett Malaguti, precinct two. And Bill, if you could allude to this. So while I know the contention right now by a few is the actual demolition of these buildings using CPC funds, if I recall, I believe a couple other projects that CPC has funded as well, too, has also used the CPC funds for demolition, and that's part of the buildings that have just been demolished, Stevens Field, and also the new addition to Veterans Park, if I recall. So we, if that is correct, we have used CPC funds in a way to actually demolish buildings that have been in ownership by the town through CPC funds.
Then Barrett, Director of Finance.
Everett, you are absolutely correct. So we have in the past used CPC funds as a resource to create a safe environment with either open space or houses that we, or open space purchases that we have purchased that actually had a building on it that we have demolished. So CPC funds have been used as, for this purpose. And in this particular case, it would be creating open recreation space.
Richard Surkey, precinct three.
That's exactly what I was going to say. You're creating open space, you're creating recreation space. The demolition is not being done for demolition's sake. It's being done to clean the land so that the land can be used for a CPC function. And with respect to financing, this money comes from the money that the CPC has. Why would you want to ask the taxpayers to raise an equivalent amount of money when the money is already there in the CPC bank account? I think the taxpayers would bridle it then.
Further discussion, Dale Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dale Weber, precinct three. One thing the Community Preservation Committee does not do is they don't discriminate. They tax everyone. One and a half percent. We're all taxed by the CPC every year, so it's taxpayer money anyway.
Further discussion on Article 9G. If, yes, Mr. Lyden, with the question, was there anybody else who wanted to be recognized as a speaker? Okay, one, all right, so we're going to, that's not debatable, not debatable.
This is just a point of order.
Point of order, go ahead.
I received a notification from a taxpayer who said that he's watching at home and he can't see the display of the votes completely. He's hoping that PAC TV could make sure that the camera stays on the air for those watching at home.
So noted. Thank you. Okay, a motion to close debate. However, I don't see anybody rising to request to speak, so I think we're just going to go and forget that and go right on to the vote on the main motion for 9G. So you're voting on whether or not to fund the request on 9G, and it's a majority vote when the light goes on. OTI will give us the light, and then we will go ahead and we will vote. We are debating 9G. This is the Recreation Hedges Pond Demolition. Following this, we do have, we started at 12:47. It looks like we're going to need to take our break, probably for five minutes, as provided, that we've been here for two hours. But right now, the light is on, we're voting, and when the voting is concluded, we'll provide the information as to the vote. And this is the CPC Recreation Hedges Pond Demolition, 162 members. We have quite a few, 136 who are voting. It is a majority vote. When the light goes off, we'll have the total on the vote for this, and the vote is as follows, coming from OTI. 120 yes, 16 no, one abstention. The motion carries. At this time, town meeting is in recess for five minutes. We are at Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street. This is the Fall Annual Town Meeting. We are in the second half of our afternoon session. It is 2:50 PM. We are reconvening. It will be up to town meeting to determine the length of today's town meeting. I do not have a motion to adjourn. When I do receive one, we will take it up. But at this time, we're going to continue with the warrant, and the next article is Article 9H. CPC Reduce Stevens Field Borrowing. Mr. Neiman moves the town appropriate $1,487,154 to pay costs of the creation and or restoration and rehabilitation of recreational land known as Stevens Field. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9H by a unanimous vote of 13 votes for, zero against, zero abstain. Approval of this article will authorize the Finance Director to use available fiscal 2024 Community Preservation Act funds to reduce the final borrowing commitment for the restoration and rehabilitation of Stevens Field.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Bill Cohen of the Community Preservation Committee. Starting on page 196 of your CPA book, you'll see Article 9H, which is a request to town meeting to reduce the borrowing from our original article back in 2015. This is an example of how we project out into time, receiving authorization from town meeting to move forward on a project. As that project commences, we start to move to town meetings, reducing the borrowing. We've done that a number of times over since 2015. Now that the town has put the project out to contract, out to bid, a contract was awarded, the work at Stevens Field has commenced, they have a contractor, they started their demolition, they're doing their repair, they're going to be doing their developing of rehabilitation of the Stevens Field area between now and July 4th of next year. Hopefully, they'll be done by then. It's an amount of money that we're asking at $1,487,154. So just to give you a quick view of the progress there, because I know people are interested in Stevens Field, they began setting up for the renovations back in late September. In October, they started the demolition. Here's the 1979 little Comfort Station. And that's now becoming a historical photograph because it's gone. And here's our little 1917 Tricentennial Comfort Station that was also taken down. Now a historical photograph that has been taken down. We're very excited about the progress at Stevens Field, that, yes, it did take time, it took nine years, but during that period of time, we learned a lot, and we ended up with a design that truly reflects all of the different components of the town. This is a townwide park. It's not just a neighborhood park. And we were able to work with the town to look at opera funds, to, you know, to assure that we could make as many repairs at Stevens Field as possible, but plan for the future. So thank you very much for that article. We hope that you support it. It is an article to reduce original borrowing authorization from 2015.
Any discussion on Article 9H? Seeing none, we're going to go to the voting. And as soon as OTI is ready, we will proceed to vote on Article 9H. We'll need the green light on, and then we'll begin voting. This is Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting. It's coming to you live from Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street. We are in the afternoon session, and we are in the second part after having had a brief recess. We are debating through the warrant, and we're looking for the light from OTI to do Article 9H, which is CPC. You can vote now. You're voting on Article 9H. It's a majority vote. Town meeting members do vote. All 18 precincts, all 162 town meeting members are using either an electronic handset or the V voter platform if they are participating remotely. These are all merged by OTI Technologies that is providing the technical support for today's town meeting. Once we complete 20 seconds, the light will go off, at which time, I believe there's someone with a handset question. Sometimes when people leave the room with a handset, that has to be addressed. So again, we're finishing the voting. When the light goes off after 20 seconds, the voting is over. We will now take the total on this, and 131 say yes, no to one abstention. The motion carries. We will now move to the next article, and the next article is Article 9I. Mr. Neiman moves the town vote to appropriate the sum of $565,470. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 9I by a unanimous vote of 13 votes for, zero against, zero abstain. Approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to allocate 10% of the estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund CPA for future spending in community housing. Additionally, 4% of the estimated annual revenues of the CPA will be set aside for funding administrative and operational expenses, and an amount will be set aside for interest expense on debt. The balance of the annual CPA revenue will be held as a reserve balance, which can be used for any CPA purpose at future town meetings.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Article 9I is our administrative article. It's one you see every year, setting up our accounts for the incoming revenue, 10% for housing that comes in. 10% of the revenues that come in during that fiscal year, during the collection of the CPA, goes to historical preservation in open space. There's a subcomponent of open space, which is called recreational. We also have the ability to ask for 5%, up to 5% for administrative activities. We've never done that in the last 22 years. We've always kept it to 4%, and we utilize that 4% for the administrative activities of the CPA, such as hiring attorneys to look at issues that we confront, looking at cost estimates of appraisal, excuse me, looking at cost estimates of projects that are coming in in the form of an application, doing appraisals. We actually use the money for signage, so you have access to the locations, improving signage at trailheads and access to CPA conservation land. So the utilizing of that fund has been done that way. Most of the activities of the committees have been done on a volunteer basis for the last 21 years. The committee has made a determination that they want to look at clerical support to help them with some activities, because over that period of time, we think that as we go into the 22nd year of the CPA, that we should be looking at those activities being supported by clerical. So the committee has voted to identify money for that purpose. Here on page 99 is where this section of your, in your CPC book, begins. On page 201, you'll see this budget behind me, where you see the 24 income and how it's dedicated. And on page 200, you'll see, as a result of this town meeting action, those monies that we did spend and what the balances of those accounts. That concludes our presentation for this Article 9A. In conclusion of the CPC articles, I would like to just recognize briefly Joan Bartlett, who served on this committee for nearly 20 years, and her husband Sam Bartlett, who served on it for three years. Their commitment to the community preservation has been something that has been inspiring to myself and others. They are lifelong residents of Plymouth, and they had had the opportunity to serve our country in the State Department. They came back to Plymouth in the 1990s, and they began to volunteer. They spearheaded the adoption of the Community Preservation Act. I just wanted to recognize Joan ended her time on the committee this spring, but I wanted to recognize all her work and her inspiration to me and the committee and others in this community, making Plymouth a better place through preservation. Thank you very much.
At this time, any further discussion on Article 9I? If not, we're going to go to the vote on Article 9I. When the light goes on, you can begin to vote. Again, a reminder, if you leave the room for more than 10 minutes, your clicker disengages. So you can vote now. People are voting on Article 9I. Following completion of this completes the Community Preservation articles, and we will move on in the warrant. Article 9I, we have 162 town meeting members. Town meeting members are voting in person and remote. This is a hybrid town meeting, approved by the town of Plymouth, by the town meeting, and we're going to continue. Today, I don't have any motions to adjourn, and until we receive one, we will continue for two hours till 4:50 in the afternoon, at which time we would take another recess, absent a motion to adjourn. At this time, the light is off, 136 yes, one no, zero abstentions. The motion carries. We're now moving on in the warrant. As you look at the way people voted, Article 10. Mr. Neiman moves the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift a deed to property located on Bourne Road. Mr. Neiman, you have the text.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10 by a unanimous vote of 11 for, zero against, zero abstentions. Approval of this article will authorize the town to accept the gift of land, 2.35 acres, from A.D. Makepeace, located in the area of 220 Bourne Road, for the purpose of a new Bourne Road Fire Station.
Any further discussion? Yes, Richard Surkey, precinct three.
Full disclosure, before I retired, I was the zoning and real estate counsel for the A.D. Makepeace Company. I think the town meeting should acknowledge the fact that this is a valuable piece of land that's being donated. In various other contexts, the Makepeace Company comes under criticism. That should be weighed against their generosity in this case.
Further discussion on Article 10? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. When the light goes on, you can begin voting. It is a majority vote. Town meeting will be voting again- Town meeting will be voting again electronically. OTI, now, you can vote. The light is on. Town meeting members are voting on Article 10, a land donation from A.D. Makepeace. It is a majority vote. Following this, we will continue on in the warrant. This particular matter has 137 town meeting members voting thus far on whether to accept this gift. Town meeting is here in session on Saturday, October 21st. It's the live cable cast. We're at Plymouth North High School, located on Aubrey Street, and we are open to the public. When the light goes off, the voting will conclude. We will then have the totals. And for Article 10, 138 yes, 0 no, 1 abstentions. The motion carries. We now move to Article 11, as you look at how your town meeting members voted. Article 11, EV Charging Fund. Mr. Neerman moves the town vote to establish a new revolving fund pursuant to General Laws Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, to be known as EV charging. You have the text, Mr. Neerman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 11 by a unanimous vote of 11 for, 0 against, 0 abstain. Approval of this article will establish a new revolving fund, EV charging. Authorize the town to charge a fee for the use of public access EV charging stations across the community. Authorize the town to use the fees collected to pay the costs associated with the electricity charges, equipment maintenance, and recurring network software costs, and authorize the town to set the fiscal '24 spending cap for $200,000.
Any further discussions? It's a majority vote. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. When the light goes on, you can begin voting. And it's a majority vote for Article 11. Article 11, you can vote now. Town meeting members are voting. We are continuing in the warrant. We have 24 articles. We are voting on Article 11, the EV Charging Fund. Town meeting members are here in person at Plymouth North High School, also working remotely through remote participation. This is a hybrid town meeting, combining both in-person and remote participation by the town meeting members. The voting has ended. We will now receive the vote from OTI. 134 yes, 2 no, 0 abstentions. The motion carries. We will continue in the warrant as you see how your town meeting members voted, and Article 12 is withdrawn. Article 13 is the conveyance of tax title property to Parks and Forestry. Mr. Neerman moves the town vote to transfer care, custody, management, and control of parcels listed below. You have the text. This is going to be a two-thirds vote, Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 13 by a vote of 9 for, 4 against, and 1 abstention. Approval of this article will transfer the listed parcels from the town treasurer to Parks and Forestry for open spaces and recreational purposes. These parcels were taken by the town through a tax lien proceeding.
Any further discussion on Article 13? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the vote. When the light goes on, you're voting. It is a two-thirds vote on Article 13. You can vote now. Town meeting members are now voting. We have been in session since 8:00 AM this morning. We are continuing. We had two morning sessions. We are in our second afternoon session for the Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting, live on Saturday, October 21st. It's coming to you from Plymouth North High School. We are halfway through the warrant. We are at Article 13, Conveyance of Tax Title. And when the light goes off, we will conclude the voting, which is concluded. We'll now get the total of the vote. 137 yes, 1 no, 0 abstentions. It does carry by more than two-thirds. Article 14, as you look at the way people voted. Mr. Neerman moves the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of parcels listed below from the town treasurer for tax title purposes. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 14 by a vote of 11 for, 2 against, and 1 abstention. Approval of this article will transfer the listed parcels from the town treasurer to the Conservation Commission for open space and conservation purposes. The parcels were taken by the town through a tax lien proceeding.
Thank you. This is a two-thirds vote, and in terms of any discussion, I don't see any. So, we're going to go to the vote. When the light goes on, we'll vote electronically, using your handheld device or V voter. You can vote now. Town meeting members are voting on Article 14. Following this, we'll move to Article 15, as we continue chronologically in the warrant. This article is a conveyance of tax title property to the Conservation Commission. It is a two-thirds vote. We have 140 town meeting members voting out of 162. And when the light goes off, we'll have the vote totals, and then proceed on to the next article. OTI is supporting us with their technology, along with PAC TV. At this time, we're going to have the vote. It is 140 yes, 1 no, 0 abstentions. It carries. You can look at how people voted, and while we do that, we have Article 15. Lawrence Dellafield, Precinct 16, moves the town vote to adopt a ban on the sale of miniature single-use containers for alcoholic beverages as a general bylaw, and to insert into the bylaw of the town of Plymouth, Massachusetts as Chapter 133, as written in the Fall 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant. It's a majority vote, and before I go to the presentation, Mr. McKay, do you have a point of order?
Yes, I do have a point of order. Thank you very much. Mr. Moderator, I believe this article cannot be voted because it has not followed the correct procedure as described in the charter and the town meeting handbook to arrive at the town meeting floor. Handbook page 16. An article is an item on a warrant, a description of what is proposed to be voted upon at town meeting. Articles may be placed on the warrant by action of the Board of Selectment or by citizens' petition. Handbook page 17. A warrant, a document issued by the Select Board to call a town meeting. The warrant lists an agenda of items to be voted on by town meeting members. Article 15 has passed on by the Select Board and reviewed by the Advisory and Finance Committee, includes the words at the end, "open space committee." This article currently set forth does not include such language. The Finance and Advisory Committee did not pass the article onto the town meeting, as should be the process. Rather, a citizen, who also happens to be a town meeting member, has put the article forward. The correct procedure for articles to be put forward by a citizen is to have a citizen's petition before the warrants are submitted, and that was not done here.
Mr. McKay, you did not bring this up to me previously, and therefore, I'm going to proceed with the presentation. You're welcome to have a conversation with town council. But we certainly can proceed with articles that have not been approved by the Finance Committee or the Select Board. We have the opportunity to have it put in motion by a town meeting member. Town council is seated in the front, and you're welcome to discuss with them. And at this time, we're going to proceed with the presentation from Deborah Iaquinto. She is from the Open Space Committee, and she is going to begin the presentation. The petition of presentations are up to 15 minutes, and I'd like to welcome Deborah Iaquinto. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, town meeting members, friends and neighbors. I'm Deb Iaquinto, and I am a member of the Open Space Committee, and I'm here to ask you to vote yes on Article 15, which proposes to ban the sale of miniature, single-serve containers of alcohol, otherwise known as NIPS. Now, there's been some confusion about the scope of this proposed ban, and I'd just like to clarify, it applies only to single-serve containers of 100 milliliters or less. It does not include shot glasses served in a bar or any other-sized beverage container. This definition that's presented to you here today has been reviewed and approved twice by town council, and it mirrors the language used by other communities that have implemented similar bans. The Open Space Committee is sponsoring this article for three important reasons. First, NIPS are a significant source of litter in our community. The preferred method of disposal appears to be, among NIP users, appears to be tossing them out the car window to avoid detection. As a result, during a four-day town cleanup, volunteers picked up more than 14,000 NIPS from our streets. And remember that these cleanups have happened twice a year for over a decade, so to have this many accumulate in such a short window of time, to me, is staggering. The second reason we're supporting this ban is that NIPS cannot be recycled. Yes, they are technically recyclable, but they're too small to go through the sorting machine, so recycling facilities will not accept them. There are plants in the Midwest, they're called, I hope I get this right, pyrolysis plants, that will incinerate NIP containers. Even they cannot recycle them. And the EPA is evaluating these plants because during their pyrolysis process, they release dioxins and PCBs into the air as part of that process. The third reason, and the final reason, is that the plastics in NIPS take decades to biodegrade. Meanwhile, they're releasing toxins into our waterways, soils, and air, causing physical and environmental harm to people and to our wildlife. Now, I wish more than anything that the state would take action and pass a solution that would eliminate the problem NIPS caused for all of our communities and cities and towns across the Commonwealth. But legislation has languished for years, primarily because of the strong lobbying efforts of the beverage industry. There's no indication that this will change anytime soon. So, NIP bans have become a grassroots effort by necessity, and we in Plymouth are learning from the experiences of the many towns around us that have passed bans, including Falmouth, Wareham, Mashpee, Fearhaven, Brewster, Nantucket, Oak Bluffs, Edgartown, and further north of us, Chelsea, Newton, and Brookline. Littering has been significantly reduced in these towns, and not one liquor store has closed. For these reasons, I again ask you for a yes vote on Article 15. And now, I'm going to invite my colleague Kent Stone to provide a little bit more context.
Kent Stone, who is also a town meeting member, is going to be part of this petition of presentation. Welcome, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. First and foremost, 15 is about litter. This is why Sustainable Plymouth is helping to promote it. I sit on their advisory board. In terms of litter, the question's been raised, what about the rest of the litter beyond NIPS? And that's a good question. My answer is, that's not being ignored. So, a few examples. There is in town right now money available and a proposal to install a water station in town, and there's monies available to do more of that. Water stations encourage the use of refillable water bottles versus the plastic disposable ones. Falmouth has installed over a dozen. Monies are also available through grants, as well as recycling dividend points, which Plymouth receives every year. There's money there that's earmarked for recycling programs that divert material from litter and waste stream. Sustainable Plymouth has talked with the DPW about ways to increase those monies that we can use for those purposes. We would like to see a voluntary green restaurant program, like one in Boston. We've talked to people from Boston, they've come down, presented programs to ourselves and to our sustainability planner. It's pretty exciting. These are voluntary programs, incentive-driven, that would decrease a lot of the things you see littered, like foodware and cups and containers. Sustainable Plymouth has been in the schools. We're involved with students and teachers and administrators on various programs that can help out. We'll continue to do the cleanups. There's more. I won't take the time to do that, but there's a lot of programs that address all of the litter, and we'll continue to do that. I wanted to clarify some things regarding the secondary gains that I've talked about regarding substance use. The focus is litter, but there is an extra benefit that automatically, or if you want, organically flows from there. And if you talk to someone about a litter, a NIP lip litter, you'll inevitably hear a reference to drinking and driving. I am a retired psychologist with a specialty in alcoholism. I know full well, we all know full well, a NIP ban is not going to cure alcohol or eliminate all drunk driving, but some percentage of the population will continue to drink and drive no matter what, but I'd like you to think about it this way. The rule of thumb that we've all been taught is you should wait one hour after each drink before getting behind the wheel. Some of us may wait that long, many of us may wait a little bit less, but we all know to wait and listen to our bodies and see how we're feeling. However, it's pretty easy to infer from the higher concentrations of NIPS that we find in the vicinity of liquor stores what that means. Whether an individual, to us, meets the definition of being an alcoholic or not, whether they are addicted or not, whether they are what many people may see as a sporadic or a casual drinker, the labels don't really matter. What we know is that a whole lot of people, in the time it takes to leave the front door of a package store, walk to their car, and start driving down the road, that they're starting to drink, and there's no doubt about that. These individuals are not going to nurse their drink. The idea is to quickly consume the equivalent of a gin and tonic or two while they drive off. NIPS enable and encourage people to do that because they know that the NIP can quickly and easily be disposed of circumventing the open container law. Half-pints are not drank that way. So, that and behaviors like customers spiking their drinks in bars, which is happening frequently, are leading to more intoxication in bars. These are the sort of risk reductions that a litter law can achieve indirectly, and it's a great sort of extra plus, if you will, that Plymouth enjoys from, or will enjoy from, a litter ban. The data I've often quoted from Chelsea shows that NIPS can be a powerful behavioral change, and we hope that will happen here as well, certainly in terms of these kinds of behaviors. Opponents suggest that there will be more consumption of alcohol and more intoxication if a half pint is the smallest container available, again referring to Chelsea, because they have the stats. If that theory was true, then drinking and problems should have gone up, or at least stayed the chain, it's the same, I'm sorry, but we know they radically went down. Lastly, I want to talk about what opponents say as the solution, which is we should get a NIP ban at the state level. Most of you received a letter from Matt Moratori, listing 11 proposed bills to expand the bottle bill and also put deposits on NIP. That letter actually proves the point that we can't wait for the state. Every single one of those bills has been languishing, basically buried in committee for this entire year, this entire legislative session, just like pretty much every bill has every year for literally a quarter of a century. None of those are going to be voted out of committee and brought to the floor for a vote this session. How do I know that? This legislation session closes November 1st, seven working days from now. There's no hope for any of these bills to reach the floor of this session, and they won't as it extends into the next, and some of those bills have been presented multiple times. So, in spite of the liquor industry finally starting to advocate for NIPS, that really doesn't seem to make a difference at this point. The Massachusetts Beverage Association, which is a trade group representing the bottlers and distributors of non-alcoholic drinks, remain opposed. Senator Moran, whose legislation is the last one on your list, has said that her bill is going nowhere. None of those bills are going anywhere. Governor Healy, like every governor before her, has failed to endorse any single one of them. Legislators see voting for a deposit as a tax. They remember the failed initiative to raise deposits from as little as a nickel to a dime. They see it as a third rail, they're not going to vote on it. I've been working on this kind of thing and deposits at the state level for 30 years, and there are a lot of people that, and groups that are doing that, and I'll continue to do that, but I'm a realist.
15 minutes, and I can tell you the remainder of time, but they have not overgone the time. Thank you, Peter.
So, I've got to orient myself to where I was. So, I'm a realist. The idea of waiting for the state to act anytime soon is a false alternative, a false promise, false hope. If it happens, it may be years from now. Plymouth needs to take care of itself and not wait for the state to act. We've done that in the past. 21 years ago, the town voted to put in the smoking ban in restaurants. They didn't wait for the state. We did the same thing with plastic bags. So, last line. A ban will help maintain the beauty of our town for residents and tur- A ban will help maintain the beauty of our town for residents and tourists, it'll improve public safety, and it'll do it while maintaining the public's right to consume alcohol. In our list of sponsors, if you could go to that, there's one, a couple missing from that slide. The Plymouth Center Steering Committee voted recently unanimously to support Article 15. These are the residents who live and work downtown, and they see every day the impacts of nips on our tourist and business districts. Also, the Board of Health and our Select Board voted in favor of it. So all these folks are more supportive of Article 15, and we very much hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And that completes the petition of presentation for Article 15. At this time, we're going to go and hear from Stephen Neerman. He is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that town meeting does not approve Article 15. This was a very passionate discussion, to say the least, on both sides, for and against, and in the end, it was a matter of personal liberties versus greater good, impact on the liquor or package store industry, but we all agree that litter is a problem, but there were, the opposition definitely carried the day.
Thank you. Arthur Deloges, Precinct 15, to be followed by Karen Petracca. Mr. Deloges, please come forward. This is debate on Article 15. Town meeting members are invited to come forward for a three-minute presentation. Good afternoon.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, good afternoon. My name is Artis Loges, Precinct 15. I speak in support of the prohibition on the sale of liquor bottles less than or equal to 100 milliliters. Today, we have heard many reasons why this prohibition is beneficial. Among them are a reduction of roadside litter, presumably less alcoholic consumption in a moving vehicle, and reduction of non-biodegradable plastics that contaminate our environment. We have also heard many reasons why it is not beneficial. I will hear them. These include a loss of individual liberty, as well as lost sales to our package stores. As you all know, making public policy is hard work, and for me, weighing the pros and cons was difficult. I am a core environmentalist, so I find the environmental benefits compelling, but I was deeply concerned about the negative business impact to our package stores, so I conducted my own research. I contacted five municipalities that had a nip ban. The three that responded, I didn't get any sales data, said no stores had closed since the ban. I also contacted the president of the Massachusetts Package Store Association. He was not able to provide aggregate data on sales before and after the ban at this time. I also learned that in Boston, more than 20% of the 280 package stores have signed on to a voluntary program not to sell nips. Still, all this left me with incomplete information. The best I could come up with was a loss of sales centering on 15%, and no store closings. If there had been evidence of store closings, I may have decided differently. Let me say that the package stores in Plymouth are wonderful neighbors. They do enormous good work for our community. This prohibition is not a penalty because of some infraction. Yet, climate change and the challenge of environmental sustainability-
Thirty seconds.
-are upon us. I believe we all have a role to play. That means we need to change what we buy, what we sell, and how we use it. This includes how we heat our homes and power our cars. It also includes a reduction in the single use of plastics and the avoidance of non-biodegradable litter on the roadside that contaminates the environment. For these reasons, I support this article, and I ask you to support it also.
Thank you. I have at least 15 people asking to be heard. I'd like to request that everyone who does speak limit your comments, possibly prepare them for up to three minutes. We're going to proceed with Karen Petracca. She is participating remotely, and will be followed by James Grillo, who is also participating remotely. Karen Petracca, welcome.
Hi, Karen Petracca, Precinct 12. I just want to say that I am very environmentally conscious, recycling everything we can possibly recycle, but I do not believe this bill will eliminate litter. I go for walks daily, and on my walks, I'm very conscious of all the litter around me. But, we have a bottle bill in place, and I find just as many bottles and cans on the streets as I do nip bottles, I do, and as well as cups, plastic cups from whichever McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, any number of places. If we're not going to ban all these, then I do not believe we should be banning the nips. There's got to be another solution. Maybe they should change some of the recycling process so that they could include that, and they don't drop through. But I, I feel like it's going to be a huge problem for, and loss of business for our local businesses, and I just want to say that I will not be supporting this. I think that the state is working on it, maybe we could postpone this till the spring and see if we can come up with something else. Hopefully, the state will approve one of the other options that they're considering, and maybe that will include other forms of litter as well, but at this time, I don't, I will be voting no.
Thank you, and that was Karen Petracca. We're going to be joined now by James Grillo. He is Precinct 8. He is also participating remotely. We're going to welcome Mr. Grillo to our Plymouth Town Meeting, and when he is connected, we will begin with him. He'll be followed by Brian Fitzgerald, Precinct 10. Mr. Fitzgerald, you can move closer to the microphone, since you have not previously spoken. Welcome, James Grillo.
Thank you. I am 21 years old. I have never, and can tell you I will never drink a nip. All signs point to me supporting banning this. I'm incredibly environmentally conscious, but I'm also going to tell you right now, it's not nearly as creative as I would have hoped. It's not levying a single tax to put in an environmental fund to support cleaning up of Plymouth. It is doing nothing but targeting a single product, and it's one of the cheapest alcoholic options you have, so it is targeting a socioeconomic class. I would sit here today and vote to ban all single-use plastics in the entire town of Plymouth if it was a possibility. I would propose that to town meeting, but that is not what we're voting on today. It's instead a targeting ban that does little to justify why it's trying to undermine a single product when there are a lot of other problems out there. I also live on a town, on a street bordering Bourne and Plymouth. Most of my purchases are done in the town of Bourne based off of how close I am to various stores and articles that I end up purchasing over the town border. I can tell you right now, this ban will not keep my community cleaner, and it will not stop people from buying nips in other towns. I sit here today as probably one of the most environmentally liberal people you're going to find on this town meeting, and I tell you right now that this ban, with 162 minds in the room, is not creative enough to warrant me voting for it, nor does it justify why you would target a single product. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Fitzgerald, Precinct 10.
Brian Fitzgerald, Precinct 10, and yeah, I might have had a nip or two in my day, I will say that. Nonetheless, I support this article. I reject the race-to-the-bottom argument that says we can't ban anything because we have to live down to the standards of our neighbors. One of the reasons this has not gone anywhere in Massachusetts is people run crying, saying, oh, people go to New Hampshire and Rhode Island to buy nips, so we have to keep our streets choked with litter. I agree with some of my colleagues that, yet, we need something more, but this is what's in front of us right now. And to stand here and reject an opportunity to reduce waste and pollution in litter, and because we want more, is a fallacious line of reasoning. I don't know how many people own liquor stores in my neighborhood, but it's not too many, the houses aren't that nice. But I know there's plenty of nips thrown out of windows in my neighborhood. When I go for an autumn walk, the crunching under my feet should be autumn leaves, not bottles of empty Fireball whiskey, but that is what we have here. Yes, we want more, we need more, but this is what's in front of us, and it's time to start to reduce the litter, make this town better than what it is, and provide an example to our neighbors. Let them follow our leadership, let's not live down to their level. Thank you.
Anthony Mayo, Precinct 6. We're debating Article 15. We'll take town meeting member speakers first, and thereafter, we would entertain speakers who are not town meeting members. Mr. Mayo.
Anthony Mayo, Precinct 6. The question on Article 15, in my opinion, it's not about restricting the sale of alcohol or free market or liberty, it's about whether the marketing and the packaging of this product is, has an adverse effect on this community and the residents. So I remind my colleagues that these are liquor stores, which are conduits to the liquor manufacturers, and the liquor industry has realized that targeting addiction and concealment is profitable. So if you want to take the economic principles into consideration, does the opportunity cost of banning the profits of nips over the higher value of mitigating ecological impact, public safety, addiction, and concealment, I say yes. Support this article.
Thank you. And our next speaker is with Nicole Manfredi, and please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Tammy Barati, I'm Precinct 1.
Thank you, welcome.
So, I personally work at a convenience store. I can tell you that I sweep that parking lot on a daily basis. I see more cups, wrappers, cigarette butts than I sweep up nips on a daily basis. This isn't going to help our business owners, and second of all, for someone that maybe only wants to drink one drink a week, they're not going to buy a half a pint and have that in their house if their significant other is going through alcoholism. So, I don't see this working, and I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. And the gentleman in the back, you're a town meeting member?
Rob Quick, yes, Precinct 1.
Please come forward.
Thank you.
You haven't spoken, we give priority to those people who haven't spoken.
Hi, I'm Rob Quick, Precinct 1. I'm very lucky, I spend my summers in Nova Scotia now that I'm retired. They've got a great program. You can recycle your beer bottles, your liquor bottles, your pickle bottles, your ketchup bottles, every container. Just a thought.
Thank you. Michael Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Hanlon, Precinct 15. I've been drinking out of this plastic water bottle for most of the day, I got another one at lunch. If you go to Orleans, Massachusetts, on the Cape, you cannot buy bottled water in a plastic bottle, single-use plastic bottle. Why is that? They banned it. So, we haven't banned them in Plymouth yet, but we did ban single-use plastic bags several years ago. There are lots of communities in Massachusetts who have done the same thing with single-use plastic bags. There will be more and more communities banning single-use plastic bottles. So, are we infringing on people's freedoms by doing this? Maybe, some people would make that argument. I would not. I think, are we going to harm liquor businesses by banning plastic nips? I don't believe that for a minute. If people want to drink, they're going to find a way to drink. So, you know, this process, this is a grassroots process right here. Starting this, it has to start somewhere. The reason our elected officials on Beacon Hill and in Washington DC don't take up these issues is because the people who make these and sell them have more, have deeper pockets than you and me, and they donate to elected officials, but not to town meeting members. They donate to the election campaign of elected officials on Beacon Hill and in Washington. They have power because they have deep pockets, they have a lot of money, and they prevent this from becoming, you know, a legislative issue. So, we need to start the process right here, right now, ban these nips. Thank you.
Peter Neville, Precinct 10.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Would you consider an amendment to this article which removes the language, so it reads adopt a ban on the sale of single-use containers? So I'm deleting the word miniature, and I'm deleting the words for alcoholic beverages-
Mr. Neville, I'm not going to let you go any further. I've said at the outset, I've said at prior town meetings, we're not going to be drafting legislation on town meeting floor, however, however, I would invite you to sit with town council, and if town council feels that the language you're proposing is possible, given the overall bylaws that we have in the town of Plymouth, then I will entertain it. But I'm not going to take it right now because this is not a simple reducing by a certain amount of money or something simpler, okay? So town council is down here, and they're available to you. Thank you.
One more point.
Thank you.
I don't know how many people today bought lunch, I did, and I wonder how many nip containers are in this plastic, single-use container. That puts it back on us to take responsibility for this stuff. I'll see what council has to say.
Patricia McCarthy, you're on my list. Please come forward, Precinct 18.
Thank you. Just to note, at the precinct chairs meeting, when this was discussed, certainly the issue of the legality of being allowed to drink was discussed, but it was very emphatically stated that that is legal, but drinking and driving is not legal, and I strongly feel that the nip bylaw can help with that issue as well as the environmental issues, because if they're drinking and driving a nip with an open, the open container issue, the person can easily throw it out the window, which is evidenced in every place we walk. You find all these nips on the side of the road. For those reasons, I strongly support this nip bylaw, and I think it's advantageous to all of us. Thank you.
Matthew Tavares, followed by David Golden. Mr. Tavares, please come forward. We're debating Article 15, amend the bylaw and a nip ban. Mr. Tavares.
So, I was going to ask this question, but both people that I was going to ask the question have walked out of the room, but I'd be curious, we, on a lot of bylaws and amendments, we go back to people within our town that would be working directly within this. But we've addressed recycling, we've addressed addiction, but a piece of this has been public safety, so I'm curious what the police chief, and since we've now learned that the fire chief is an all-hazards department, I'd always be curious as to what their feelings were based on this bylaw.
So a question for our public safety officers, I don't see. However, we do have the town manager, Derek Brindisi. Derek Brindisi is rising in response to a question from Matthew Tavares. Mr. Brindisi.
Great question, Mr. Tavares. Unfortunately, our police chief had to leave early, so I, you know, he's not here to respond to that question, but I think as you all debated, this is certainly an issue for the environment that has to be considered, and there's certainly an issue on the business side as to the appropriateness of this, of this bylaw. But I think at that, in that situation, the town has tried to stay as neutral as possible on this highly debated article.
David Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Golden, Precinct 7. I stood up today because the presenter included substance abuse as part of the rationale for passing this amendment. I'm going to be vulnerable for a moment here with my colleagues and say that I grew up in an Irish Catholic, working, poor family, so substance abuse was, it was profuse in my family. I will tell you, folks, that no matter what we do here today, the people who want to drink are going to find a way to do it. They will absolutely either buy a larger container, which means that they're going to consume more, or they're going to go to one of our neighboring towns. And I would say that the public health concern presented- And I would say that the public health concern presented by either of those two scenarios is worse than what we have now. So I would encourage you, if public health is the reason that you're supporting this, you vote no. If they go to a neighboring town, they're driving further, and they're going to pass by more homes, they're going to pass by more bus stops, they're going to pass by more people, and they will absolutely put others in danger. I'll caveat this by saying that I am an environmentalist. I have an electric car, I use reusable shopping bags, I spend about 73% of my life following my wife and my daughter around to shut off lights in the house. I am absolutely in favor of protecting our environment, particularly the beauty that we have here in Plymouth. But this article does not do it. So I would encourage you to vote no. We have laws against littering, we have laws against drinking and driving. Let's follow those laws.
I'd like to invite the town meeting members behind Mr. Cirque to come forward.
I also did some research.
Excuse me, do we have a procedural question or a point of order? Stand up. Stephen Lloyd moves the previous question. It's a motion to close debate. You can see who's still standing. It is not debatable. We will now determine whether to close debate on Article Fifteen. It requires a two-thirds vote. When the light goes on, we'll begin voting on whether to close debate. You can start voting now. You're voting on whether to close debate on Article Fifteen. We're voting remotely and also in person. Town meeting members have been here throughout the day following Article Fifteen. I do understand I have another procedural motion for this town meeting, but at this time, we're going to continue with this article. Seventy-nine say yes, fifty-six say no, one abstention. We're going to continue. Kenneth Kessel, if you want to come forward to speak at this town meeting. Welcome, Kenneth Kessel, town meeting member.
How you doing? Ken Kessel, Precinct Eleven. So I talked to some of my constituents, I talked to some of my college-age kids, you know, and they've all said the same thing. To implement this on a state level, it might work. To do it locally, they're all going to Kingston and Carver, they're going to buy their NIPS there. If they drink them immediately, as some have stated, they're just going to be driving longer under the influence.
That's George.
So I won't support this article.
Thank you. We're going to go over to this side here. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Carmen LeFrierey, Precinct Eighteen Chair. I was born and raised in this town, and I despise and loathe the litter that I see all over the place. In my professional career, I've lived in four different states. They manage their litter far better than we do. I don't know how, but they do. I also do not want to see local businesses lose business. I just want to suggest we not ban these NIPS, but raise a deposit to motivate the collection of such bottles. Thank you.
Maureen Renaud, Precinct Six. We're debating Article Fifteen. Maureen Renaud.
Thank you. It'll be brief. So I was very much against the NIP ban. My brother, who lives with me here in Plymouth, challenged me, he said, "Go out to the street if you don't believe it, and bring the trash back." And I said, "Okay." I was amazed, there was well over 50%, like, there was like 150% to 100% of all the trash. It was way more than any other trash. So I lost $5 in that bet. So little by little, I learned more about it. And when I got to realize that it's not usually going to be recycled, that was another chink in the armor. And then when I realized that it wasn't biodegradable, boom, so now I'm voting for the ban. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to continue, we're going to bring in Catherine Holmes, Precinct Nine, who's participating remotely. If we can bring in Catherine Holmes, we'll be followed by Richard Cirque, Precinct Three. Catherine Holmes is a town meeting member participating remotely, using the video conferencing through Zoom and V voter. Yes?
Thank you, Steve. So there's a lot of support and against this article, and I think that we've gotten all many emails and letters from liquor store owners concerned about their loss of revenue. But I challenge you, because Plymouth town members have always taken in all their information before they make decisions, and they always, in the past, have looked at the interest of all of our residents. So now, everybody that knows me well knows that I love a good wine, and I've raised my glass with many of you, so I'm certainly someone that visits liquor stores for good bottles of wine often. And I don't want to impact anyone's business negatively, but I have a stronger need to keep our residents safe, and I will never put the desire of a business to make money at the detriment of our public safety. So I fully agree that our town streets and our natural spaces are littered with NIPS, and we must do something about this. But in my opinion, litter is only a small piece of this issue. This issue is really about drinking and driving. And it doesn't mean that everybody that drinks and drives is an alcoholic, but this is really what we're talking about here. There is no other reason why our streets are littered with NIPS, other than the fact that people are buying these bottles, they're drinking them in their car while they're driving, only to thoughtlessly throw them out the window to remove their evidence before they get caught. Now, it allows people to discreetly drink and drive. Now, some have said this falls on our police departments to ticket the litter bugs, and, you know, everybody knows that our police officers are very hardworking people, and they're diligently trying to keep our residents safe. But we're still in the throes of an opioid epidemic. We have drugs in our streets, and our kids are battling with drug addiction, and they're trying to deal with crime. So right here in Plymouth, our police department, when I looked at the numbers and I pulled the reports, they're charging over 100 people a year with an OUI in Plymouth. And let's be honest, they don't catch everybody. That's a significant amount of drunk drivers that are on our streets every day, jeopardizing our safety and our children's safety. And it's important to note that NIPS are extremely high in alcohol content. They're up to 80 proof, when an average beer is only 4% or 5%. But it's NIPS that are littering our streets. Not many beer cans, I'm seeing NIPS when I'm walking down my streets, and I just did a cleanup last week. So I could give you all kinds of statistics saying about the devastating impacts of alcohol-related accidents. I could tell you that, you know, almost 14,000 people were killed in accident-related deaths last in 2023, or 3,500 of them were kids under the age of 18. And I could share with you that 37 people die every day of alcohol-related accidents. But I'd rather give you some insight that I received when I went into the local liquor store. Can I get an extension for one minute, Steve?
Catherine, we have quite a few people that want to be heard, if you could lend me your marks.
Okay, well, I think this is important. So I asked the clerk behind the counter, "Do you sell many of these? You know, what's your understanding of why people are buying them?" And the guy behind the counter at the liquor store said that, he goes, "Oh, that's really easy."
Thank you, Catherine Holmes. Thank you.
And why? I missed what you said.
We're going to continue with Richard Cirque, Precinct Three, followed by Mike Babini, Precinct Three.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
It's Precinct Two, Mr. Moderator.
Precinct Two, Richard, thank you.
At Precinct Two's caucus on Wednesday, we were advised that the Massachusetts Association of Package Stores claims, quote, "The sale of these NIPS represent 10% to 15% of the sales of independent stores," close quote. I found that claim hard to believe, so I contacted the association and spoke with the association's vice president and general counsel. I asked him whether he was saying that 10% to 50% of the sales included the sale of NIPS, which I don't care about, or whether he was saying that the net profit of store owners would decline by 10% to 15% if NIPS were banned, which I do care about. I'm not interested in how many sales include the sale of NIPS. I'm interested in what effect the ban would have on a store owner's net profit. I regret to say that I did not get a straight answer to this question.
Michael Babini, Precinct Three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick question. I'm sure these liquor stores have quite an inventory of NIPS. If this passes today, when will this go into effect?
Anyone can respond.
Yeah, I can respond to that.
Please come forward. Kenneth Stone. Go ahead. Kenneth Stone is representing petitioners.
As the bylaw is written, it will go into effect July 1st, 2024. So I'll have seven months.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Now, Kenneth Stone, did you care to be heard?
Yeah, I'll go back to this microphone, I guess. There was mention about the health effects, et cetera. The Board of Health voted four to one in favor of this because of the environmental effect and because of the substance issues, the drinking and driving. The idea of people going to other towns, some will for their NIPS. I'm not going to drive from the Mannheim area 40 minutes out of my way, round trip, in order to get a six-pack or bottle of wine, just because my local store doesn't sell NIPS. I will frequent my local stores, and a lot of other people will. And also the mention about what the Mass PAC said in terms of that range, Mr. Cirque talked about how that isn't really clear exactly what they are talking about. But that director said in an article in 2022 in a liquor industry magazine that the range could be from as little as 7% up to 10%, and in certain conditions, maybe 15%. Not anywhere near this 50% that has been thrown out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can bring in Natalia Driscoll, who I believe is participating remotely, I believe she has a procedural motion. Natalia Driscoll is with Precinct Two. Natalia Driscoll? I believe she's doing a motion to close debate. This is not debatable. I just want to confirm, because I'm seeing lots of things on my screen, including a motion from Mr. Lyden, but he's here. So if we could bring in Natalia Driscoll, also bring in Catherine Holmes, who has a point of order. So if we could bring in either one of those speakers. Natalia Driscoll? Is a motion to close debate? Natalia is muted, okay? But she wrote a motion to close debate, but we'll first hear Catherine Holmes's point of order. Is Catherine Holmes joining us? She's also muted, okay. At that point, we have both, we have a number of people still standing.
Mr. Moderator, are you impressed?
All right, so Jeff DeLapp is moving to close debate. Thank you. All right. It's not debatable, it requires a two-thirds vote. When the light goes on, we will determine whether or not to close debate on Article Fifteen. The light will go on at which time you can vote. You can vote now. You're voting as to whether to close debate on Article Fifteen. This is not debatable, it requires a two-thirds vote. And after the vote is completed, we will determine the manner in which to proceed as to whether debate is closed or whether we're going to continue. Article Fifteen is to amend the bylaw, specifically a NIP ban. And at this time, we've got the motion to close debate, and therefore, once this is voted, we'll determine whether to close debate on Article Fifteen. Ninety-six say yes, forty-three say no, zero abstention, the motion passes. We will now end the debate on Article Fifteen, and we will now be voting. And so the voting is going to begin on Article Fifteen for the town meeting members, and when the light goes on, you'll be voting whether to amend the bylaw, Chapter 133, regarding a NIP ban. When the light goes on from OTI Technologies, you can vote now. You're voting on whether to have a NIP ban. It is a majority vote. Town meeting, following this, will entertain a procedural motion that I've received through the assistant town moderator from one of the town meeting members. But first, we're going to finish Article Fifteen, which is to amend the bylaw, Chapter 133, on the NIP ban. And we have 141 town meeting members voting on the NIP ban, and out of 162, and it is to amend a bylaw. When the light goes off, we will now get the vote on what the vote is. Seventy-two say yes, sixty-seven say no, two abstentions, it carries. Mr. Withington, I mean, Mr. Brewster, Wrestling Brewster moves to adjourn this town meeting. Any discussion on whether to adjourn? Yes, Brendan Brady on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brendan Brady from Precinct Ten. Can somebody please tell me from the town how much it costs to hold this event today? Roughly?
And so you're speaking on the motion to adjourn.
On the motion to adjourn, yeah. Because we talk about being, we just talk about being fiscally responsible, so are we going to charge our taxpayers to reboot again on Monday night, or just spend another hour and get it done?
Okay.
So how much does it cost to do this today?
So Mr. Brady has a question. I don't think it's rhetorical, I think you're asking the question.
And yes, sincerely, roughly, what it costs to put this event on today.
And while we're waiting for a response, Mr. Brady, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, so it's just that I think being fiscally responsible, we should choose to just stay here and finish today, rather than passing the cost on to our taxpayers again Monday evening.
Okay. While we're waiting for the response, Mr. Brewster, you made the motion. Would you like to speak in favor of your motion?
Sure. I'm usually of the opinion that to stay and finish, we've got some important stuff coming up that might take some while. I don't think we're going to get done tonight. And I just wanted to give the option to the body of whether we stop tonight and come back on Monday or not.
Okay. Thank you. Nathan Siegel.
I'd be in favor of keeping going, trying to get through as much as we possibly can. I'd also mention that motions to move the question often take longer than just to let the people talk, so I'd be in favor of just keeping going. I hope others agree, and just try to get as much done today and not have to come back a second day.
Thank you. Derek Brindisi.
So PAC TV doesn't typically charge us for a second night, but certainly, we would have to incur the cost of police detail, incur the cost of the overtime rate for staffing this auditorium and the school building, and then for the OTI cost. So when we had done a prior analysis last spring, we barreled around $10,000 to $12,000 to hold a third town meeting. So I would think if we had a meeting on Monday night, it would be about $10,000 to $12,000.
Further discussion on the motion to adjourn. If not, we're going to go to a vote. It's a procedural motion on a motion to adjourn. When the light goes on, you can vote whether or not you wish to adjourn to Monday, or whether you wish to continue until we have a motion to adjourn or dissolve. The light is on, you can vote. This is a procedural motion, and is available to town meeting members. Again, it says generic, but it's a motion to adjourn, just so you know. It is the generic slide that they're using on a motion to adjourn for town meeting. It's a majority vote. We've already had our debate. A yes would be to adjourn to Monday, and no would be to continue through the warrant today. And at this time, when the light goes off, we will take the vote if the light is off. Thirty-seven say yes, ninety-nine no, three abstentions, we'll continue. I'll read the next article, motion into the record while you look at how people voted. Legislative petition, Harbor Master employees. Mr. Neiman moves the town vote to authorize select petition Massachusetts General Court for special legislation. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16 by unanimous vote of 13, 4, 0 against, 0 abstain. Approval of this article will authorize the town to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation that would place the full-time sworn members of the Harbor Master Division of the Plymouth Police Department into Retirement Group Four as outlined in MGL 32-3. All full-time members of the Harbor Master have completed the police officer standards and training, and are certified police officers, which provides them with the full law enforcement authority throughout the town, thereby justifying the reclassification into Retirement Group Four.
Thank you. And before we go to the debate, I do have a point of order on the remote participation. Precinct Nine, Catherine Holmes, if we can bring her in. Catherine Holmes.
Hi. Yeah, so I actually tried to do a point of order earlier, but I'd never got the request to unmute or mute. So my understanding is that the length of time that a town meeting member gets to speak is up to town meeting, and respectfully, it's not a decision of the moderator. I think we covered that in a couple of town meetings in the past. I think we covered that in a couple of town meetings in the past. So I, I just, I understand that the, the by, the bylaw passed. Great, I would have liked to have finished because I think I made some good, I had some good information to share. But my understanding is that it's town meeting that makes the decision on how long people get to speak, and I think that's important.
Thank you for your point of order. I would just clarify that you could do a motion to extend the time. At the start of that particular article, I did announce that we had a long list. We did not get through the list. In fact, we had many non-town meeting member people that have been here, residents of town of Plymouth, that were shut off and were not able to be heard because we had so many town meeting members that wanted to be heard. I determined that it was appropriate to try to stay to three minutes. Certainly anyone in the room, including you, could have appealed the ruling of the moderator.
I, I tried to.
I did try to recognize you before the vote. Catherine Holmes, your microphone, for whatever reason, was muted, as I was told by PAC TV, and certainly your, your point is so noted. And in the future, I would ask all speakers to consider preparing your remarks to be concise and within three minutes if it is a highly contested article where we know there are many people speaking. We want to hear from as many people as possible during the debate. But at this time, we're going to move on with Article Sixteen. We heard from Mr. Neiman. And if there any, anybody else that cares to be heard on Article Sixteen? If not, we're going to go to the vote. And when the light goes on, we will begin voting. We're voting on whether or not to approve the legislative petition for Harbor Master employees. You can vote now. This is a majority vote. Majority vote will then continue. And as we continue, we do have a motion under Article Seventeen. Although it was not in the motion book, I will read it in its entirety. But right now, you're voting on Article Sixteen, the legislative petition for Harbor Master employees. We have one hundred and sixty-two town meeting members, one hundred and thirty-six have voted. And at this time, once the light goes off, we will receive from OTI the total who voted on Article Sixteen. One-thirty yes, no, three abstentions, three. It carries, and we're going to read into the record Article Seventeen. I will read it in its entirety. It is entitled, "Holtech Pilot Payment in Lieu of Taxes." Mr. Neiman moves the town vote to authorize the Select Board to negotiate and enter into an agreement for payments in lieu of taxes pilot with respect to Holtech Pilgrim LLC, the former power station located at six hundred Rocky Hill Road in Plymouth as shown on Assessors Map Forty-four, Lot One B, containing one hundred and thirty-three point five-seven acres upon such terms and conditions as presented on the payment in lieu of taxes agreement proposed final draft dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, distributed on October twenty-one, twenty twenty-three to town meeting. Mr. Neiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hot off the press, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Seventeen by unanimous vote of twelve-four, zero against, zero abstentions. Approval of this article will authorize this payment in lieu of taxes, known as pilot agreement for real and personal property taxes with respect to Holtech Plymouth LLC, Pilgrim LLC, the former power station located at six hundred Rocky Hill Road in Plymouth shown as Lot One B on the Assessors Map Forty-four containing one hundred and thirty-three point five-seven acres. The terms of this agreement are for annual payments for fiscal years twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-one as set forth in the proposed final draft dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. The agreement includes a right of first refusal on certain, certain parcels of land owned by Holtech described as, quote, "certified areas," unquote, on Exhibit Two and a town credit in the amount of three million dollars, which may be used as a credit to apply towards any deposit or the purchase price of any offered premises at the town's election. The Advisory and Finance Committee feels that this agreement is in the best interest of the town of Plymouth and applauds the efforts of the town manager and the Select Board for their due diligence to negotiate the best deal possible and in a timely manner for today's fall meeting.
Before we hear from Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board, I did receive a motion to amend, which essentially would add additional language to the agreement. I did rule it out of order. The reason I ruled it out of order is because this is an agreement between Holtech and the Select Board. Consequently, our authority as town meeting is only to vote it up or down. So I'm not going to be taking any motions from anybody who would like to change the agreement. That is not within the scope of our authority. But we can vote to approve this or disapprove. Kevin Canty, Vice Chair, Select Board.
Hello there. Thanks for sticking around. So this is Article Seventeen and you, a presentation about money, land, and nuclear So you may be asking yourself, why am I hearing this so late? Well, since the May election, the Select Board has held executive sessions for these negotiations on seven occasions listed there upon. I would note that that's only since the election. This is actually something that's been worked on by prior Select Boards as well. So it's been a long, ongoing process. August eighth, Mr. Bendizzi and I had the honor of being in Japan at the time, and we zoomed in to participate in that particular executive session. And then, of course, October thirteenth was last Friday night. I don't know what you were doing last Friday night, but the rest of us, those on the Select Board and the town manager, as well as our special town council, from five to about six forty-five, we're talking about this. So we did what we could to try and get it to you as quickly as we could, but our priority was trying to get the best deal for all of you that we could and have it ready for this town meeting, which I'm happy to report that we did accomplish. So let's first talk about money. Money, this pilot agreement covers an eight-year period, fiscal years twenty-four through thirty-one. The total payments amount to thirteen million dollars. They are outlined in Section One, Page Two of the agreement. Holtech has agreed also, as part of the overall negotiations, to drop their prior appeals because they were outside of a pilot cycle for a while, so they were being taxed in the normal course. And when you disagree with your tax assessment, you can appeal those taxes that were assessed to you to a, a body called the Appellate Tax Board. They did that in FY twenty-two. They're agreed, they've agreed to settle that. They did not file an appeal in FY twenty-three, and they will not be appealing during fiscal year twenty-four through thirty-one, which although the town tends to win those arguments, we still have to litigate them, which involves an expense. So this is much better than having to fight about it for many reasons. So as I said, thirteen million dollars over this eight-year period, we determined the payment schedule that would be allocated, not Holtech. So this is how those payments are going to be allocated pursuant to the agreement. And as you can see, the town also reserves the right to adjust payment to reflect any additions or improvements that increase the value. So this agreement is considering the fact that the plant is going to be in an active decommissioning state over the course, that there's more stuff there now than there will be at the end of this process in eight years. However, if that were to change and they were to start improving the property, if they were to do something, as has been bandied about by some, like small modular reactors there, that would be an improvement under the agreement, and we would reserve the right to increase the tax assessment in that, in such a scenario. So that's an added protection for the town, should that occur. I will add as an aside, Selectman Helm and I had an opportunity to talk to representatives from the NRC. Holtech currently does not have a small modular reactor product. There is another company that does have them, but not Holtech. If Holtech were to try and develop their own, it would take about six to eight years if they were starting today to do that. So they would either have to go through that process or try and sell the land or license the other product in order to do that. So we would have notice of that, and we would be mindful of that, both in terms of the pilot and in terms of the other considerations of, once again, potentially having a nuclear power plant in the town of Plymouth. So let's move on to land. Holtech owns approximately one thousand six hundred and seventy-six point six-five acres on Rocky Hill Road. One hundred and forty-six point three-four of those acres are considered to be the plant property. But one thousand five hundred and thirty point three-one acres are in what is called Chapter Sixty-One Forestry Status. In order to understand this pilot, you first need to know a little bit about Chapter Sixty-One Forestry Status. So the purpose of Chapter Sixty-One Forestry, if you have a certain amount of land or more and you put that into forestry, it lowers the taxes for the landowner while that land is in forestry status. The benefit to the public would be having more trees, having area for wildlife, aquifer and water protection, et cetera. The benefit for the taxpayer is they have to pay less taxes. But if the landowner wants to sell or convert the land that's in forestry stratus to a non-forestry use, such as residential, commercial, and/or industrial development, then, under Chapter Sixty-One, that triggers a right of first refusal. That's one hundred and twenty days to exercise plus a further ninety days to close. Alternatively, under Chapter Sixty-One, a landowner can take land out of forestry status and pay five years of the difference between what they did pay for the reduced amount under forestry and what they would have owed if it wasn't in forestry, hold on to the land for another year, and then discharge that right of first refusal. They, under this agreement, there we go. The, we have an enhanced right of first refusal on this Chapter Sixty-One land, this one thousand five hundred and thirty point three-one acres that we are presenting to you in addition to the payment and the pilot. This enhanced right of first refusal runs for this eight-year duration of the pilot. It increases the timeframe to one hundred and eighty days to make an offer and ninety days to secure financing and close for a grand total there of two hundred and seventy days. It eliminates Holtech's ability to pay the five-year back tax difference and discharge the town's right of first refusal rights. So that scenario that I just explained, they're agreeing not to be able to do that during the pendency of this eight-year pilot. It grants also the town a right of access to the parcel annually to appraise it and then to update that appraisal. When you have an appraisal and appraisal is good for a year, it costs more to do an initial appraisal on a piece of property, it costs less to update it. We wanted access to the land on an annual basis so that we can always have a current appraisal in hand. That's because if, we estimate that if this parcel were to come on the market today in its entirety, it would be anywhere between thirty-five and fifty million dollars in price. We, this may come as a shock, but we don't have that kind of money on hand right now. So we would most likely, if this happens in the near term, have to be looking for grants from a variety of state, federal actors, perhaps nonprofits as well. Those grant cycles, a lot of them are on a three hundred and sixty-five day basis. So we want to have an appraisal in hand so that when we're starting that two seventy days that we have, the one eighty plus ninety, we're already ahead of the game. Because a lot of the, that one eighty involves, is thought to involve you going out and getting an appraisal. But if we already have that appraisal in hand, we're already ahead of it, we can get a go on that. It also commits Holtech to participating in a master plan process with the town for the land to determine future uses for that land. So this was briefly mentioned earlier in the broader master planning article. But we want to look at this land, what we want to do with it, what we want to see done with it, so that we have a better sense of the actual value that we ascribe as a community, not just the Select Board, but as a community, to that land so that if this parcel is coming on the market in multiple chunks, not all at once, and something is going to go to a conservation status and someone else is willing to put it in conservation status in a way that we also wanted it in conservation status, then we don't need to try and buy that piece of land because let them conserve it with their money, right? Or if they want to do an industrial use that is consistent with what we would like to see done, same, same situation, light industrial, I'm not talking about putting a factory there or something like that. But you get the idea. If we know what we want to see done with that land, then we can better assess these offers that are coming before us, these bona fide offers from people looking to buy the land and determine what action we want to take as a community. So the pilot also involves more money. The town is given a three million dollar credit that can be used for any purchase of any portion of the one thousand five hundred and thirty point three-one acres that the town may acquire during the eight-year pilot. That is a credit that is good for the duration of the eight-year pilot. When making a purchase, the town can choose to use some or all of the credit or retain some or all of the credit for a future purchase during, during the pilot period. So we don't have to use it at any given time, as long as we use it by the end of the eight years, we'll get the value out of it. But we can make that strategic decision as the situations present themselves. So that was a lot of information. In summation, the pilot does the following. Provides thirteen million dollars in payment to the town over eight years with no appeals to litigate. Strengthens the town's right of first refusal by extending the timeframe and eliminating the ability of Holtech to pay back taxes, to discharge the right of first refusal during these eight years. It grants access to the town for appraisal purposes annually for eight years. It gives the town a three million dollar credit to be used for land acquisition during the eight years. And it engages the town and Holtech in a master planning process for the land to determine its future use or uses. What the pilot does not do is prevent Holtech from selling the land to a buyer that wants to keep it purely in forestry status. So Chapter Sixty-One right of first refusal is triggered when there's going to be a change in use. If you're selling it to someone that wants to develop commercial land, residential land, industrial land, that triggers the right of first refusal. So if, say, the National Park Service wanted to open National Park Pine Hills, for example, which we don't think they're going to do, but just as an example, that wouldn't necessarily trigger the right of first refusal. But we've, we have a plan for this eventuality. We are going to reach out to state and federal conservation agencies and local groups and put them on notice that the town is interested in being involved in this conversation. The thrust of the Select Board's efforts here is not, is entirely to put Plymouth at this table so that we, as a community, have a few, a say in what happens to this very important piece of land. And we don't want some other group swooping in, if we can avoid it, and keeping it in conservation if that's not what we, as a community, want to do. I know some people may want to see it all conserved, and we're going to talk about that as these things come up, but we think it's important that we have a seat at that table. The pilot also does not guarantee that Holtech will sell any or all of the land during these eight years. We have reason to believe that they will sell most, if not all, of the land during the eight years. Their original timeframe for the decommissioning process was shorter than it is now because of some economic pressures that they're feeling, that they're extending that timeframe. So we have every reason to believe that they're not going to be wanting to hold on to this forestry land, which is vestigial land really left over when the plant was originally opened, that it was thought that these plants need a significant buffer space that now modern plants do not need. So even if Holtech is going to be trying to continue to operate this as a future small modular reactor station or sell it to somebody else that wants to, they don't need to retain this forestry land. And even though they're paying reduced taxes for it, they're still paying taxes for it. So there's no need to have an expense that you don't need. So we do believe that they're going to be selling it during this timeframe, but on the flip side, let's say they don't sell any of it. As I said, right now, we don't have thirty-five to fifty million dollars to buy the land. So in our estimation, even if we run out the clock and we don't buy a single acre of this over the next eight years because it doesn't go out of it, that would still have bought this community time to get its financial house in order and be able to have a seat at the table when the time comes that some or all of this land goes on the market. So that is what the Select Board has been doing at all those executive sessions about Holtech. I am available for any questions.
Any discussion on Article Seventeen? Mr. Brown, please come forward.
First and foremost, I think all of us here should give a round of applause to the Select Board and the town manager for negotiating this wonderful deal from Holtech.
Patsy Hall?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Canty for an excellent presentation. You would have made a great teacher. I'm sure you're great at whatever you do. But I have a question. Let's say at the end of the eight years, or any time in the process, now I guess it's the end of the, end of this pilot, that Holtech decides to sell the fifteen hundred acres and take it out of forestry and sell it commercially in some way, do they have to still pay the five-year previous taxes? Or does this somehow eliminate that need?
So if the land, so even without this agreement right now, they have a forestry right of first refusal that would be triggered in that type of a situation? So this, this pilot doesn't require them to keep the land in forestry during it, it just eliminates the economic incentive for them removing it during the pendency of the pilot agreement? So if the land, and they've been re-upping it into forestry while they've had it, so if it's still in forestry at the end of the eight years, it would revert back to the one twenty plus ninety. I will say that it took us a long time to negotiate. 90. I will say that it took us a long time to negotiate this. It took them a long time too. They were paying their lawyers to do the same thing. So if they still have a lot of this land at that time, our hope is that they'll want to do something similar to what they did here rather than reinventing the wheel. But if the land, I guess, if the land is still in forestry and we don't reach a similar agreement, it would go back to what we have today on the land. If they don't re-up in forestry, then, and as long as they get outside the timeframe for, there's a timeframe after you take it out of forestry where you could still be subject to that, right of first refusal. As long as they exceed that clock, it wouldn't necessarily trigger it. But again, we are, we are very optimistic that much of this land, if not all of it, will be sold by that time. But those are the scenarios that would play out in that eventuality.
I didn't, I guess I didn't ask my question exactly enough, detailed enough. If the town cannot afford to buy the 1,500 acres and whole tech goes out to sell it as a commercial property after the pilot ends, do they then have to pay five years of back taxes if they don't, if they can bring it out of forestry? Our town right of first refusal, we don't meet that deadline. So now they, they're free from any right of first refusal requirement. Will they have to pay the five years previous taxes?
In that scenario, if they, if we get the right of first refusal is triggered and we decline it, then no.
They don't have to pay the five years back taxes?
Not, no, but they'd still have to be subject to the right of first refusal in that situation. If they, if they're under forestry and they have an offer to sell for a conversion purpose, then it would trigger the right of first refusal. They'd have the 120 plus 90, once they're outside of the pilot.
Well, let's say extends that, the town doesn't buy it, can't buy it, doesn't want to buy it, whatever. Do they have to pay the five years previous taxes?
No, still no.
Patricia Edelman.
May I just ask one more question?
Okay.
I think it went out of my head, but it'll come right back in a second. No, if I remember it, I'll ask.
Patricia Edelman.
I still don't know for sure.
Article 17.
Do they have to pay the five years back taxes? Because I think they should. Oh, and the other question was, during the pilot time, do we not have to pay the lawyers to do any more negotiating? Are we going to save eight years of lawyers' fees in terms of negotiating with whole tech?
Well, on this topic, yes. If something else comes up, we will address it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right. We paid a lot of it this year already.
Patricia Edelman, followed by Thomas Kelly. Patricia Edelman.
I think you already answered most of my question. But if whole tech is still there after the eight years, what happens?
Well, whole tech, we anticipate that whole tech may be still on, the plant property, as I said, is not included in the right of first refusal. So we anticipate that whole tech may be still there at the conclusion of the eight years. So, then we would be looking to, we have a home rule petition where we could negotiate another pilot. The pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes applies to the plant property. The right of first refusal applies to the forestry land. So, if they're still there, or a successor, just like when Entergy bought it from whole tech, we'd be looking to negotiate a pilot with whoever has and operates that land in whatever capacity it exists at that time, most likely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we bring in Thomas Kelly, Precinct 6? He's participating remotely at this town meeting. Thomas Kelly, welcome.
Say it again.
Good, Tom.
Thomas Kelly, Precinct 6. Kevin, who would control the transmission lines that go from Rocky Hill Road, I think, right out to Taunton? Is there any discussion on who's going to buy them, or rip them down, or take them down, or what?
Those are the power grid, the power lines leading from the old plant? I believe they, yeah, I believe they're owned by, those are owned by Eversource and a part of the power grid. So, they're not subject to this nor owned by this company.
Any other questions?
The area they can control is, is left and right of each, each power line is about the size of a football field. So I'm wondering, you know, how much land are they, you know, are they going to take them down? Don't? Or are they going to, how would they reuse them if they have no generation?
Well, we anticipate, there's some possibility that they might have some generation on the site, depending on what their future desired use of the site is. And there's a, there would be an easement, a utility easement around the lines already. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard Cirque.
I just want to draw attention to an answer you gave to Betsy Hall's question. She asked whether, after the eight years is over, and if the property thereafter is still in Chapter 61, and if they sell it for industrial, commercial, or other purposes, the right of first refusal would obtain, and they would have to pay back taxes for the last five years. I don't think this would exempt them.
We will accept that answer.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Michael Bobini, Precinct 3.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I have 100 questions. But the bottom line is, if you're not part of a negotiation, there's no way of telling whether it was a good negotiation or bad negotiation. What you do is you put your faith in the people that were there, the board of selectmen, the town manager, that's what you're voting on tonight. Do you have confidence in what they've done, or you haven't? Personally, I do. But, you know, I really, there's a lot of questions here, but not being involved, I can't, can't really get an answer that I would be satisfied with, so.
Biddy Kavakko, Precinct 6.
Understood.
Well, I don't have any questions because obviously, this has been something that the select board has been doing for years. But I want to say that I need to applaud all of you because bringing it to fruition has been a long, tedious road, and I think you guys did a great job, so.
Nancy Davis.
Thank you. So, it looks like we are going to kind of get porked on this one because they pay about 3.25 million right now in taxes. So if you multiply that, it's like 25.3 million. So, they're going to pay about half that. So is that a good deal? I don't know. I'm just putting it out there.
Further discussion?
Yeah.
Any other ques, any other comments, Nancy?
Chew on that one? Nope.
Thank you. We have another town meeting member coming forward. Chris, if you want to come to the microphone, welcome.
Thank you. Chris Smarrell, Precinct 11. Kevin, not sure if you can answer this, or Lynn, but in regards to the $13 million, will there be a reserve fund set up for this monies? And if so, will there be an investment vehicle put in place?
So...
We have the Director of Finance, Lynn Barrett, who can further respond.
This is a tax payment. This is not a payment in addition to what they owe us in taxes. So, it's general fund revenue to support our annual budget on an annual basis for the next eight years. As far as the previous speaker, what they pay in taxes is based on an appraisal of the activity that goes on at that site, the assets that they have at that site. And as they decommission and remove things, the value of that site decreases. So basically, at the end of the four years, we are, we are going to be left with the value of the, the storage facility that's there, and the land, and that kind of thing. So this, this number is really based on an appraisal that we did with our professional appraiser, and in negotiation with our attorneys and with whole tech. So I think it is a really good deal. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
Select board, does the select board unanimously support the deal? I assume you must, but I just wanted to confirm that, that this was a unanimous vote.
It was, and we do.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we're going to move to the vote. When the light goes on, you'll be able to vote on Article 17. It's a majority vote. Light is on, you can now vote. You're voting on the whole tech pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, Article 17. Hereafter, we will continue to 4:50, at which time we'll have a recess, and then following the recess, we'll reconvene at this time. And that's because we started, we will have started two hours ago at 2:50. You're voting right now on the whole tech pilot agreement, Article 17. It's a majority vote. Following that, we'll move to Article 18, which is the solar pilot for 17 Plymouth Street. Once we complete the voting, the light will go off after 20 seconds, and we will then announce the vote. Town meeting members have been in town meetings since 8:00 AM this morning. We are now continuing. We have the vote on Article 17. 132 yes, 1 no, 2 abstentions, it carries Article 18, solar pilot, 17 Plymouth Street. Mr. Neerman moves the town vote pursuant to provisions of general laws, Chapter 59, authorize select board of assessors to negotiate and enter into an agreement, a pilot for 17 Plymouth Street. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 18 by a unanimous vote of 14, 4, 0 against, 0 abstention. Approval of this article will authorize this payment in lieu of taxes, also known as a pilot agreement, for personal property tax associated with a floating solar development, which will occupy approximately five acres within the 12-acre agricultural reservoir located at 17 Plymouth Street in Plymouth, shown as lots 3, 4, 5, and 6U on the Assessor's Map 107. This is a floating solar project with a total production size of 2.476 megawatt direct current. The terms of this agreement would be $15,000 per megawatt direct current with an escalation of 2.5% per year for 20 years. 50% of these payments will be deposited into the Environmental Affairs Fund.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Yes, please come forward. Mr. Conroy, on Article 18.
Why aren't we not taking these pilot funds, say, from the whole tech and this money, put it in a reserve fund, invest it, so that we have $35 million or $50 million to buy the property down the road? Why are we just spending the money? I think we should start saving it. So that's the question. Why are we spending the money?
And who would like to respond to Mr. Conroy's question? Lynn Barrett is the Director of Finance.
Basically, under mass general laws, it's real estate and property taxes, and we cannot, we cannot do that. As far as these solar pilots, this is personal property, which is outside of our tax levy, a payment in lieu of tax that we got special legislation for, from the state, to put the 50% into the Environmental Affairs Fund. But we're not allowed to do that for real estate taxes on this, in this pilot agreement.
Thank you, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have the light go on from OTI so we can vote on Article 18. It's again a majority vote on a payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot for 17 Plymouth Street. And town meeting is ready to vote when the light goes on. And you wait until the light goes on before you do vote in order the vote be properly tabulated, you can vote now. Town meeting members have 20 seconds in which to vote. 162 town meeting members. This is Plymouth Fall Annual Town Meeting. We are in session on Saturday, October 21st. It's coming to you live on PAC TV. And we are in the afternoon session. We are on Article 18. After, we will move to Article 19. And this is a majority vote on Article 18. We have 135 town meeting members voting out of 162. And when the light goes off, you'll have the totals for Article 18. And they are as follows. 133 yes, 2 no, 0 abstentions, it carries. You can look at how people voted as I read Article 19. It's a solar pilot for Long Pond Park and Ride. Mr. Neerman moves the town vote pursuant to the provisions of general laws to negotiate and enter into an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes. You have the text. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 19 by a unanimous vote, well, actually, it wasn't unanimous. It was 13, 4, 0 against, and 1 abstain. Approval of this article will authorize this payment in lieu of taxes, a pilot agreement for personal property tax associated with a solar project development located at Exit 13 Long Pond Road Park and Ride in Plymouth, shown on Assessor's Map 89. This is a parking lot canopy solar project with a total production size of .67745 megawatts direct current. The terms of this agreement would be $13,000 per megawatt direct current with an escalation of 2.5% per year for 20 years. 50% of these payments will be deposited into the Environmental Affairs Fund.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? If not, we're going to move for the vote. If OTI can give us the light, we'll proceed with the vote on Article 19. It's a majority vote, and town meeting will be voting. You can vote now. You're voting on Article 19, a solar pilot for Long Pond Park and Ride. We will continue through the warrant. We will move to Article 20, following Article 19. Article 19 is a majority vote, and is a solar pilot for Long Pond Park and Ride. Town meeting members are voting in person using a clicker. They are voting remotely, using the V voter platform provided by OTI Technology. We are supported also by PAC TV. We thank PAC TV and OTI for their technological support, also support from the Plymouth Public Schools, and specifically, the people here from the Center for Performing Arts. We could not do this without the help of so many people today. We completed the voting. 137 yes, 0 no, 0 abstain. It is unanimous. You can see how your town meeting members vote. Article 20 is withdrawn. We will move to Article 21. Mr. Neerman moves to amend the vote taken under Article 9A38. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 21 with a unanimous vote of 13, 4, 0 against, and 0 abstentions. Approval of this article will amend the vote taken under Article 9A38 at the April 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Design cemetery space to amend the funding by reducing the amount from Article 9A-15 of the April 2009 Annual Town Meeting Cemetery Software by $9,855, and by increasing the amount from sales of lots by $9,855. The purpose of this amendment, to switch the funding source due to the cemetery software fund balance being less than the amount needed to fund source, to funding source, sales of lots that has the appropriate fund balance to satisfy Article 9A38 funding amount approved by town meeting.
Any further discussion on Article 21? If not, we'll go to the vote. When the light goes on, you can begin your voting. You'll have 20 seconds in which to vote on Article 21. It's a majority vote. Vote now. Town meeting members are voting on Article 21. Our warrant contains 24 articles. We will continue today through the warrant to all 24 articles. We are on Article 21. Again, a majority vote, and all our votes are roll call, since we're using technology with electronic voting provided by OTI Technology. Town meeting members have handsets they can use to vote. They also, if they are remote, use a V voter platform, and they're able to speak to us through the Zoom platform. Voting has completed. On Article 21, the total vote, 134 yes, 0 no, 0 abstain. It carries unanimously. You can see how people vote while we read Article 22. Into the record is to amend the April 2023 Article 13 Promotion Fund. Mr. Neerman moves to amend the vote taken under Article 13 at the April 2023 Annual Town Meeting. You have the text. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 22 by a unanimous vote of 13, 4, 0 against, and 0 abstentions. Approval of this article will amend the vote taken under Article 13 at the April 2023 Annual Town Meeting Promotion Fund to fix a typographical error and increase the appropriation by transferring $136,478 from the Town Promotion Fund created pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Acts of 1993 for programs and projects that enhance the beautification, recreational resources, public safety, promotional and marketing activities, events, services, and public improvements.
Any further discussion under Article 22? If not, we'll call for the vote. When the light goes on, you can vote. This is on Article 22. It's a majority vote, and it'll be a roll call. You can vote now. 20 seconds you have to vote. As we move through the warrant, Article 22 is to amend the April 2023- As we move through the warrant, Article 22 is to amend the April 2023 Article 13 Promotion Fund. Town meeting members are in their fourth session of town meeting on Saturday, October 21st, coming to you live from Plymouth North High School on Aubrey Street. We are on the warrant, Article 22. We have 24 articles. We have two remaining. Voting has ended on 22. The vote is as follows. 134 yes, 1 no, 2 abstentions. The motion carries. Article 23, and you can see how your members voted. Special Purpose Article opioid settlement. Mr. Neerman moves the town authorize special purpose article to appropriate $239,092 from free cash to administer the opioid settlement abatement funds. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 23 by a unanimous vote of 13, 4, 0 opposed, and 0 abstentions. Approval of this article will authorize the transfer of $239,092 from free cash to the opioid special revenue account for the purpose of funding community-based organizations focused on preventing drug addiction and providing mental health services across our community.
Any further discussion on Article 23? If not, call for a vote. If OTI can give us the light, we'll begin voting on Article 23, the special purpose article. Town meeting members will have 20 seconds in which to vote on Article 23, which is the opioid settlement. Please vote now. 20 seconds. We'll tabulate your vote. We will announce it. We will then move on to Article 24. And Article 24 is a citizen's petition and is to amend the zoning bylaw, Chapter 207-11 Solar Systems. We are now completing the voting on Article 23, which is the opioid settlement special purpose article. It is a majority vote. 137 town meeting members are voting on Article 23. As we conclude, when the light goes off, we will then have the totals for Article 23, and they are 135 yes, 1 no, 1 abstention. Article 24, Mr. Neerman moves the town vote to amend its zoning bylaws governing ground mounted solar photovoltaic systems. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 24 by a vote of 5 votes for, 4 votes opposed, and 2 abstentions. Approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaw 207-11 Ground Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Systems, GMSPS, requirement for 4D financial security requirement to include projects that exceed 8 feet above grade in height. Amend the requirement for 5A notification for a butter notification of potential GMSPS projects to include projects that are within 700 feet of the property line of the parcel or parcels upon which the GMSPS proposes to be situated, and add a new Section G view shed affected by the zoning bylaw. The committee had mixed feelings about this, obviously with our 542 vote of this amendment, and some of the concerns were with the financial surety and also concerns with singling out GMSPS and not including all above-ground mounted systems.
Petition and presentation. Like to welcome Plymouth residents Mark Pacico, followed by Attorney Tim Thangley. Mr. Pacico.
Good afternoon or evening, I guess at this point. We just have a very short presentation. It's been a really long day. We've asked our speakers to stand down. We've seen all of you. We were able to hit all 18 precincts. Thank you for your consideration. We've received favorable recommendations from the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, and the Select Board. And given those facts, Attorney Angley is just going to give you quick three-bullet high points because some of you we haven't seen for a while. Thank you for your time and consideration. We really enjoyed meeting all of you through this process.
Thank you. Timothy Angley.
Thank you all. Just a quick summary of what we're looking to do. One, financial surety. We added language to exempt the town and parking lots, and we added language that installations over 8 feet above grade would be required to provide a financial surety for removal if they're abandoned. Two, the notice requirement. We've increased the distance of notice from 300 to 700 feet, mostly because a lot of these are large installations and they're quite visible from a distance, so we felt that more residents should be informed if they're going to be impacted. And the view shed area is we're trying to put the onus on the developer, that they should come to the town with a complete plan that's going to adequately screen these installations as the current bylaw already states that they need to, and that we want to make sure that the Planning Board has the tools they need to be able to adequately enforce these provisions. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tavares moves to amend the language by inserting the following section severability. If any section provision or portion of this bylaw is deemed to be unconstitutional and invalid by a court, the remainder of the order shall be effective. Mr. Tavares, do you care to be heard in your motion? No, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote on the motion to amend. If we can do the motion to amend with the light from OTI, you can vote now. You're voting on whether to amend the main motion from the Finance Committee to add the language proposed by Mr. Tavares. You have 20 seconds in which to vote on the motion to amend. Town meeting is completing action on its final article, which is Article 24. And town meeting has 162 town meeting members, and we still have 134 who are voting on the motion to amend. When the light goes off, we'll complete the voting on the motion to amend. It is off, and the vote is as follows. 103 yes, 22 no, 11 abstentions. It carries. We are now debating the main motion as amended. Everett Malaguti. Everett Malaguti is from Precinct 2. We normally would take a recess in a minute. Go ahead, Mr. Malaguti.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct 2, and also a member of the Energy Committee. So regarding this article, which I applaud the attempt of the citizens that actually drafted this petition and brought it to town meeting, which is a feat all within itself. I actually would like to state that the Energy Committee's position on this article was unanimous vote against this proposal. The rationales for this were actually similarly echoed by the Chair of the Finance Committee of the financial surety and also some of the ambiguity for the view shed. So let me first go within the financial surety. So yes, we want a financial surety for large installations that actually have a detriment if they are abandoned. But what the financial surety lacks to actually propose in here as well is to include if a small residential scale one is actually installed. And we don't all know that while the cost of solar is going down, it's still a detriment for a lot of people to do. And if they do actually have the means to do it, why burden them with a financial surety while it's on their own property? If they sell their house, obviously, they're going to have some hassles. But if it's within their actual rights, they shouldn't be burdened by an extra surety to actually install it to actually better not just their livelihood, but also the benefit of the environment as well. The view shed argument came up, and I know that we all want scenic views, and I want scenic views as well, too. But I think the view shed is actually something that is, in this case, in the eye of the beholder and needs to be more tightly defined and not just a loose definition, which was actually stated within our precinct that the definition for this was gotten from Merriam-Womster's dictionary instead of actually a legal definition. For the years that this solar bylaw has actually been in existence, it's been amended a couple times, and like any document, should be amended to make sure that it's actually relevant for the actual case that's involved. But I believe that just pushing it forward into a town meeting without actually going through multiple meetings of detail and actually formulating a better bylaw, as we mentioned vigorously earlier in Article 5, I think that this was just pushed through just for one singular project. While I'm not doubting the neighbors that actually wanted to actually make their voices heard on this project, every neighbor should be heard on a project. It's their right as a taxpayer. But I do believe that within this case, I think, in my opinion, this should be voted down today and moved to the spring so a better article crafted for not just this, but emerging technologies within the solar environment can be addressed, and we don't continuously every six months come for an amendment on this, but make it right the first time instead of just piecemealing everything. I would also like to, if the town meeting would allow, Mr. Farah to actually explain a couple of the parts within the addition to the bylaw, which is the screening and the buffering effects. Thank you.
30 seconds. Mr. Malaguti, you're looking for a response from Patrick Farah. So Patrick Farah is coming before town meeting. If there are no objections from town meeting members, it's 4:52. I'll waive the recess, and we'll continue. But if it goes too long, we're going to have to have a recess. Mr. Farah.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So with regard to screening, right now, any type of solar project goes through site plan review. There is already language in there for screening. I believe it's under definition 201 dot dash 3 or .3 under the zoning bylaw that clearly defines screening measures now. So this would actually be some redundancy in the bylaw. Also, with regard to the financial surety, the issue that Mr. Malaguti brought up is a good one with regard to small residential projects. If anyone has seen what's called a solar flower or an active tracking system, they all exceed, at least the technology that's of today, they all exceed 8 feet. So that means any project that is residentially sized would have to also follow that type of criteria. You'd have to have a performance guarantee. And I'm available to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Nathan Siegel.
Never mind.
No questions. Any further discussion? Yet. Mark Pacico.
Sorry. I said it would be quick, but in terms of residential, none of these residential projects come into play unless they require site plan review. And so, again, with the surety, we're talking about a backyard installation over 8 feet tall that would also trigger site plan review. Minuscule. Minuscule number. That's all that this financial surety piece is about, that we've changed. The rest is already in there. So unless we think there's a ton of people putting up 10, 14-foot installations in their backyards, and let's face this, too. We're talking about how much money it would be to take this down. If I've got one thing on a pole that's 10 feet tall, the cost of taking it down is a rope and a pickup truck. It's not a big thing. View shed. The law talks about certain words, the general vernacular. That's why we went to the dictionary. What a view shed means is that it is an unimpeded view. We could have sent anybody within 200 feet, whether or not they already had screening or not, would be subject to this law. No, we didn't. We wanted to be very specific that if there was no screening whatsoever, then this law took effect. We were very careful. We excluded municipalities. We excluded parking lots. And we were very specific as to who this would affect and when it would kick in. And to say it's only one person, this place is all over town. It could kick in. But what we didn't want to do is make it tougher to put in solar. Personally, I've done work all over the country on green projects, specifically Iowa, Michigan, Minnesota, on wind farms. Guys, if this was anti-solar or anti-green, I wouldn't have taken the gig. So we just wanted to make sure that, I understand that the Energy Commission do not care for much of this, but we met with every single precinct. We met with Mr. Farah for about almost two hours. We met with members of the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, just countless meetings. So to say we didn't do the meetings, we did a lot of meetings. A lot of you are sick of seeing us, I'm sure. I'm sick of seeing us. So thank you again for your time and consideration. We hope to move to a vote. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. If we can have the light for the vote. We're voting on Article 24. It's a 2/3s vote in order to pass on this particular article. And when the light goes on, you can begin voting. You can begin voting now. This is the last article. Will be followed by a motion to dissolve. I'd like to thank PAC TV for supporting us, OTI, Plymouth Public Schools. Special thanks to Assistant Moderator Nicole Manfredi, to Jeanette White, and the entire Advisory and Finance Committee, to Kelly McKelreth, our town clerk, and certainly to all the boards and committees who helped to make this town meeting, and to all of you as town meeting members. We need a quorum in order to complete town meeting and dissolve it. We'd ask people not to leave. The vote is completed on Article 24, and it is as follows. 87 yes, 46 no, 4 abstentions. It does not pass. We will now have a motion to dissolve. Mr. Neerman moves to dissolve the town meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. And once the vote, the light goes on, you can vote as the motion to dissolve. If OTI can give us the light, we'll begin voting on whether to dissolve the town meeting. Town meeting, we have a motion to dissolve, and when the light goes on, you can vote to dissolve the town meeting. And OTI is going to provide us with that light so that we can vote to dissolve town meeting, and you can vote now. You have 20 seconds in which to vote following your vote. If it passes, the town meeting will be dissolved. I'd like to thank everybody again for your time, for your attention, and we have a motion to dissolve the Fall Annual Town Meeting, and if it is successful, we will dissolve town meeting. It is over on the light. We will now, 126 yes, no, 1 abstention. Plymouth Town Meeting is dissolved at 4:59 PM. Thank you.